All right. Welcome to the Lincoln City Council Meeting for December 14th. Let's all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a period of silent meditation.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of British Commons, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll begin with the Mayor's Award of Excellence. Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Councilman, thank you. This is the Mayor's Award of Excellence for November, presented to Police Officer Timothy Mica, who's here with us today, with his beautiful family, by the way. He is with the Technical Investigations Unit of the Police Department. Investigator Michael Mica has worked for the city since 2006, nominated in the category of productivity by Sergeant Sandra Myers of the Technical Investigations Unit for his work on a very complicated fraud case. He was assigned to the case when he first joined the unit in January of 2014. Local bank was reporting losses of more than $250,000 through its transactions with a local construction company. Further investigation found that more than 20 subcontractors had also been victimized by the same construction company and suffered losses in the tens of thousands of dollars. Mica interviewed bank and loan officials, served subpoenas to obtain records, interviewed subcontractors, and altogether compiled and photographed all the job sites, work orders, and receipts. The investigation uncovered a scheme to defraud the local bank by using bogus documentation to obtain lines of credit. The company also presented bogus checks and invoices showing materials and labor had been provided when they had not. None of the work had been completed and no checks had been issued. Mica continued to build a complex case of fraud against the owners of the construction company, presented his case to the U.S. Attorney's Office, and federal indictments were forthcoming against the two owners of the construction company for bank fraud and conspiracy to commit fraud. The people of Lincoln and local financial institutions suffer big losses each year because of scammers and people committing fraud. So this long and detailed investigation is just one of many that Investigator Mica has successfully completed. So it's my pleasure to present Tim Mica with the Mayor's Award of Excellence for November. Please join me in congratulating him. Chief Pashad, did you want to say a few words?
Thank you, Mayor, for recognizing Tim for this award, and members of the City Council, thank you as well. Tim's a very hardworking, dedicated employee, and as you just heard, you know, he got a new assignment in technical investigations in January, and this was his case that was handed to him. And so he got introduced to the frying pan right away, and he did just an outstanding job, and this is what Tim does day in and day out. So congratulations, Tim.
I'd just like to say thank you to the Mayor and to the Chief, and thank you to Sergeant Myers, who couldn't make it here today, also to people in my unit. Obviously, these cases, when they're big, you get a lot of help from your coworkers as well. They may not have been recognized, but I do appreciate them helping out, so this is partially theirs as well. So thank you.
I want you to introduce your candidates.
Yes.
Sure. Right here, this is my mother-in-law, Mary. Next to her is my middle child, Bristol, my oldest child, London. This is my wife, Summer, with our baby, Harlow. And then this gentleman right there is my father, Dad, is Bob, and right beside him is my mom, Chong. So a lot of them here today.
Thank you very much. All right, we'll give them a second to clear out here and move on with the regular meeting. Okay. In accordance with L.B. 898, a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chamber. The order of business of the City Council is as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda under public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The applicant and those in favor should speak first, then those opposed. The applicant may then make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating name, address, and whether you are speaking in favor or in opposition to the item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last meetings of the month immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on an issue not on the agenda for that date nor plan for a future agenda. If you need an agenda, we have some in the back of the room, and if you need a parking pass to get out of the lot that is just to the north of here, Teresa has some, or we have some in the council office just down the hall from here. Teresa, let's call the first item, please.
Sure. First, I would like to remind people, please clearly state your name and address and sign in on the sign-in sheet laying on the podium. Due to the Christmas and New Year holidays, the City Council will not meet on Monday, December 28th, or on Monday, January 4th. First item is our public hearing consent agenda, items one through eight.
Okay. Anyone wishing to speak to one of these items, please come forward.
Good afternoon, my name is Don Hertz. I guess I'm number one on your agenda. I'm being appointed to a term on the Community Health Endowment, and my address is 1817 St. Andrews Place, and I'll answer any questions that you may have.
Cindy.
Ms. Hertz, thank you for being here tonight. Appreciate it very much. And I looked at your application, and I said, oh, there's not a lot there, so I wanted to find out a little more about you if I can. Just because my interest has piqued, I saw that you were a retired consultant, and I just wondered what you consulted about.
Let me go back even a little bit further. From 1999, most of the board knows my background, and a few of you may not. From 1999 through 2011, I was the City Finance Director. After I retired, I did some consulting work, very limited amount. But during the period of time that I was here, I spent, for the first part, a considerable amount of time helping the Community Health Endowment finalize the sale of the hospital. In the last two-thirds or so, I spent a considerable amount of time working on financial activities for them, primarily dealing with the investment of that money that came from Brian. And so since I've retired, I've had some limited consulting contracts, but not too much.
Forgive me for not knowing your name, but when you stepped up, I knew you were familiar-looking, so I guess I've seen you on Channel 5 before. Thank you for coming tonight, sir.
Jane.
All I can say, Don, is you're going to be a tremendous asset to this amazing organization, and you know it very well already. I was also on the Community Health Endowment Board of Trustees, and I can tell you, it's probably my favorite board that I've ever served on. So it is a working board, so they will take advantage of all your free time.
Thank you, Jane. When I retired, this was the first board that I asked to be a... It's taken a while, but here I am.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much. All right, anyone else wishing to speak to one of these items, please come forward.
For the sake of time, I'm here, item number three, Judy Halsted, Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department, and Peush is with me as well. Item number two is reappointment of Martha. Now, you remember, the reappointments don't appear, but I'm very excited that Peush is here today, and he will give you a little bit of background in his history. He is very qualified to be part of our Air Pollution Control Advisory Committee. We're very fortunate to have his expertise. He is a consultant here in Lincoln that has done business probably with many of you. And so with that, I'm going to introduce Peush and ask for your support on behalf of the department for this appointment.
Hi, my name is Peush Ravastov, and I work for a company called Naxx, and we're an environmental consulting firm. My role in the company is that I specialize in issues related to air quality regulations, so we provide services on all matters that relate to air quality regulations. And I feel I may be able to contribute to this board, since the board basically works on coming up with new regulations, adopting existing EPA regulations or various versions of that. And I'll keep that brief. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer those questions.
Questions? All right. No questions. Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak to one of these items, please come forward. Okay, seen none, next item, please.
All right, if not, we can vote on these items. Items one through three were introduced by Camp.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Lyrian, discussion. Okay, call the roll.
Christensen.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Fellers.
Yes.
Gaylor Baird.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Raybold.
Yes.
Camp.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Items four through six were introduced by Christensen.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Jane, discussion. Okay, call the roll, please.
Christensen.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Fellers.
Yes.
Gaylor Baird.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Raybold.
Yes.
Camp.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Next, then, are public hearing liquor resolutions. I'll call item nine, application of B&amp;R Stores, Inc., doing business as Russ's Market, two, to expand its Class C liquor license by the addition of a new licensed area described as a one-story irregular-shaped building approximately 273 feet by 345 feet, including the mezzanine area located at 103 North 66th Street. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth, as you barely believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you.
Nathan Johnson for Russ's Market and B&amp;R Stores. I'm the store director at 66 No. Street, Russ's Market, 1545 Rabahoe.
Okay, questions? Roy. Can you tell us a little bit about what you're doing here?
Well, we're in the process of a full expansion. We're going into the old, what was the CVS side. We're doubling the square footage of our store, and we're also going to be enhancing the spirits department as well, making that more of a full-service department, but we are going to make it a lot bigger.
Okay, other questions? All right, thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak to this item? Okay. I wonder, could we go ahead and just vote on this, and then our colleague could come back in? If that's okay with the rest of the council, we can do it. I'd move approval of item nine.
Second.
Seconded by Carl, discussion. All right, call the roll, please.
Christensen.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Fellers.
Yes.
Gaylor Baird.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Raybold, as abstaining. Camp.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven, six to zero. All right, then I'll call items 10 and 11. They are the application of Thirsty Sports Bar for a Class C liquor license at 317 South 11th Street, Suite C, and the related manager application of Jason Von Canell. Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth, as you barely believe it to be?
Yes.
Thank you.
Jason Von Canell, 2320 Northwest 46th Street, applying for the liquor license at right, not too far away from here, on 11th Street, for Thirsty Sports Bar.
Okay, questions? All right, seen none? Thank you. All right, anyone else wishing to speak to this item? Okay, next item, please.
All right, next is the application of Boiler Brewing Company for a Class C liquor license at 129 North 10th Street, Suite A, and the related manager application of Tad Erz. Raise your right hand, gentlemen. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth, as you barely believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you.
Monte Frelick, 129 North 10th Street.
Tad Erz, 129 North 10th Street.
Okay, tell us about your application, please.
We are installing a craft brewery in the basement of the Grand Mans with an accompanying tap room.
Okay, questions from the council? Carl.
Will there be food?
They will, there will be. We will not be preparing the food, but we'll be partnering with local establishments around that location.
Okay, great.
All right, any other questions? All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak to this item? Next item, please.
All right, next I'll call items 14 and 15. They're the application of South Point Cinema for a Class I liquor license at 2920 Pine Lake Road, and the related manager application of Lisa Freida. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth, as you barely believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you, Tim.
Good afternoon, I'm Tim O'Neill, 800 Lincoln Square, 121 South 13th Street. I'm here on behalf of Nebraska Entertainment, which is a subsidiary of Marcus Corporation. This is part of Marcus's continuing commitment, investment in Lincoln with the modernization of another theater in Lincoln, and expansion of its food and beverage service, and I'm here on supporting the application. If any questions, I'd be happy to answer it.
Roy. So is there a renovation going on, that's going to be happening here?
It is. Two of the theaters are already completed as of last Friday, and they're taking two theaters at a time, obviously, not to close down during the holiday season. So two are done, and the food and beverage service is kind of an ongoing process. So they're expanding what food will be offered, and then obviously alcoholic beverages, and then the other four theaters will be enhanced with the theater seating and the sound and the video equipment, audio equipment. So it's going to be, it's going to look a lot and feel like East Park at the end of the day.
Great, other questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak to this item, please come forward? All right, next item, please.
All right, next is item 16, manager application of Sandra McCorkindale for Cigar's Lounge at 800 Q Street, Suite 102. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth, as you barely believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you.
Sandy McCorkindale, 1906 Gunnison Drive.
All right, and tell us about your application.
We're at 800 Q Street. It's a vacant building between the Twin Peaks Building, and there's a parking garage there. We're actually down the alley. Our plans are for more of an upscale cigar bar for the business traveler type of clientele. We're, I think Lincoln has a very successful cigar bar now, and we're hoping, again, to offer something a little more upscale for those enthusiasts.
Okay, questions? All right, thank you very much. And anyone else wishing to speak to this item, please come forward? Okay, next item, please.
All right, next is item 17, manager application of Jason Gurkin for Red Robin at 2707 Pine Lake Road. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth, as you barely believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you.
My name is Jason Gurkin, 5720 South 93rd Street in Omaha, applying for the manager application for Red Robin on 2707 Pine Lake Road.
Okay, questions? Cindy.
You going to make the drive every day?
Um, it's not too bad. Today was really interesting this morning, but otherwise, it's not too bad. It gives me a little time to veg out after work and kind of decompress, so. I got a newborn on the way in January, so that'll be like my hour of me time every day, so.
You're not going to get any sleep.
You'll manage a restaurant for long enough, you get used to it, so it's all right.
Thank you for coming today.
Other questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak to this item? Okay, next item, please.
All right, next is item 18, manager application of Randy Wilson for Crawford's at 101 North 14th Street, Suite 1. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth, as you barely believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you.
Randy Wilson, 5717 Harding Drive here in Lincoln.
All right.
I'm here on behalf for applying for manager license for Crawford's at 14th and 0th Street.
Okay, questions from the council? John. Teresa, have we resolved the application issue?
Yes, they came in and paid.
Okay. Jane.
Randy, I know that when the investigators were trying to get ahold of you, they had a heck of a time getting you to respond to some of the notices they left. Do we have your correct address?
Yeah, everything's been solved now, and I was out of town for a period of time, so it was difficult for a while, but that's all been rectified.
Okay, great, good.
Carl.
Yes, so Randy, tell us about the business on Crawford's. Been there, what, about a year, maybe?
Actually, only about six months.
Okay.
It's been kind of a three-phase process. Kind of took over kind of a couple old businesses that have tried to succeed there, and now I've kind of turned it into one, kind of a new sports bar complex with kind of three sections with food, TVs, and a separate bar entertainment.
Okay, other questions? All right, thank you very much. Go ahead.
One of the reported, you reported some of the information about previous issues, and selling to a minor was one of them, and it was just last year. Can you speak to us about what happened there and explain?
Yeah, I was kind of a, I was a... Happened in the summer. I had a very, very large bachelor party show up. I was the only one working. It was kind of an unexpected, so I was immediately overrun by about 100 and some people, and I was doing my best and carding people, and actually had one slip behind me. 26 years of being on liquor license, I have always tried my best to uphold that, and it was pretty much an embarrassment for me as much as anything to let that go by.
Were there any changes put in place after that happened?
You know, for the most part, we, you know, as a general business, we do hire doorman all the time when we're busy. Unfortunately, this was a rare incident where normal summertime business, where it's normally not that busy, got, I got overran by myself and missed someone.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak to this item, please come forward? All right, next item, please.
All right, next is item 19, manager application of James Donaldson for the Flatwater Bistro at 801 R Street, Suite 100. Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth, as you barely believe it to be?
Yes.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm James Donaldson, 801 R Street, the Flatwater Bistro. We just had a change in structure of ownership and just had to make a change on our liquor license, so here I am.
All right, any questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak to this item? Okay, next item, please.
All right, next is item 20, manager application of Steven Roker for Walgreen Company, doing business as Walgreens, 515 at 2600 South 48th Street, Walgreens 541 at 1301 O Street, Walgreens 1162 at 8300 North Thorne Lights Drive, Walgreens 2845 at 5701 Village Drive, Walgreens 3182 at 7045 O Street, Walgreens 4088 at 2502 North 48th Street, Walgreens 5874 at 2630 Pine Lake Road, Walgreens 6884 at 4000 South 70th Street, and Walgreens 11089 at 5500 Red Rock Lane. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth, as you barely believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you.
Steve Roker, 4821 Bear Creek Road, Lincoln, here to, for the application for all the Walgreen stores.
Carl.
I think I counted nine. Stores, but these aren't all the Walgreen stores.
That's correct.
Because there are some stores that are within 100 feet of residences that aren't allowed to have liquor licenses for that reason.
That is correct.
How many stores don't have liquor licenses?
Four of them.
Four, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? And you're scheduled to make your managers training on the 14th of January?
That is correct.
Okay. All right, any other comments? All right, thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak to this item, please come forward? Okay, next item, please.
All right, last is item 21, manager application of Patrick Dietrich for the Target Store at 33, 333 North 48th Street, 5330 South 56th Street, and 8201 South 40th Street. Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth, as you barely believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you.
Justin Poots, 7839 South 24th Court. I'm just here on behalf of Mr. Dietrich. I'm the director of the store down on 40th Street.
How do you spell your last name?
P-O-O-T-S.
Thank you.
Okay, any questions? Roy. Anyone else wishing to speak to this item, please come forward? Okay, Teresa, let's vote. Mr. Chair, I would move approval of items 10 through 21.
Second.
Seconded by Carl, discussion. All right, call the roll, please.
Christensen.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Fellers.
Yes.
Gaylor Baird.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Raybold.
Yes.
Camp.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Next, then, are public hearing resolutions. And at this time, I would entertain a motion for council to suspend their rules so that we could have the public hearing and action on item 47, assessing the costs incurred for cutting, clearing, and removing weeds against the various benefited properties for the period of January 1st through December 31st, 2015.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Jane, discussion. And we're changing our agenda just slightly to take an item that is further on in the agenda that we notified people that we would be doing the hearing today, and that would be, what item was that? Item 47, is that correct?
Correct.
All right, item 47. All right, call the roll, please, on the motion.
Christensen.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Fellers.
Yes.
Gaylor Baird.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Raybold.
Yes.
Camp.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. So if there's anyone here who wishes to come forward on that item, they can do so at this time.
I'm Lancaster County Weed Control Superintendent, and we also do the weed abatement for the city of Lincoln, so. And on this process, these are the weed abatement mowing assessments for this past season, and these are the ones that have not been paid to this point. So I just ask for the council to assess those to the properties, and they will become a lien against the properties. Got any questions, I'll be happy.
Cindy.
Thank you. Could you just tell us about the process that each of these goes through before we're here today?
Yep, and would you like to clear back when we start the initial phone call to the...
Well, I guess I'm just wanting to know, there's, as I understand it, there's some kind of a notice that there's a weed issue. The homeowner... The homeowner receives the letter and then eventually when it's not cured, the city, the city goes out and mows, correct?
Yep. So the way it works is typically we work off of complaints or off of the history on the property that we know are, are an issue and once we do that, we send the inspectors out. If it's a property that we don't have a history on, we'll send just a courtesy letter and a lot of times those get it taken care of. If the letter doesn't get it taken care of or it's a property we have a history on, then we go ahead and send a legal notice on those, giving them a timeframe to go ahead and, uh, get that controlled if it's not controlled in that period. We then take an additional step which we're not required to do. We send an enforcement warning to the property owner which goes non-certified, so the, the legal notice goes certified. This one goes just with regular postal service. And a lot of times that gets it cleaned up, but if it doesn't, then this is where we end up here with, with the contractor going out and doing the, the mowing on it. The property owner has then sent an invoice if they, and we initially, at that same time, when we get the bill from the contractor, we file a possible notice of unpaid weed assessment against the property which just lets the realtors know that there's a red flag on that property in case they're trying to sell the property. And then from that point, it becomes a then, then we go ahead to this process and we actually send another notice telling them that there's gonna be a hearing on this date when they will actually be assessed a lien against the property. And if it's not done by this date, then that's what we do here is assess the, assess the lien.
That's the letter that the chairman was referring to, that we notify people?
Yep, and that letter was sent back on November fourth.
Okay, thank you.
So, it's, it's a lengthy process to get here, but, uh.
Jane, go ahead.
I have a question. I noticed that some have, uh, one violation and the second time and even one has gone through this process three times.
The, uh, thirty-two parcels were enforced on twice this year and one parcel three times, so. It, uh, I don't know what your question, but, but that a lot of these properties are, are foreclosure properties, so they eventually transition out and these liens that you put against the properties, eventually we get that money back. We bring in around thirty thousand dollars of previous year's history, uh, assessments every year on these, so.
Is that the total amount for both the city and the county, that thirty thousand dollars?
On this one here?
Yeah.
No, it's more than that. It's like, do you have the?
This is forty-one thousand, okay.
Yeah, forty-one thousand.
John, do you have a question?
Yes, I do. It's out of curiosity, uh, you talk about the collections and maybe a year behind or whatever on the foreclosed properties. Do you know what type of volume or dollar amount you have that's outstanding there that you hope to get someday?
That I don't, you know, what we've got through the, what's still outstanding at the treasurer's office?
Like your uncollected, uh?
Boy, I don't, you know, we I suppose we could get that from them. I don't have that number at my office, but that would be the, you know, what's still against liens against, I don't know if they can separate that out or not. I suppose they can.
So once this goes to lien, you, really you're washed of it?
Right. We only, at my office, we collect the current year, uh, payments to this point. Once we get to this point, it's paid to the county treasurer's office.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Alright, thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak to this item, please? Come forward. Alright, next item, please.
Alright, next we'll go on to item twenty-two then, accepting the report of new impending claims against the city and approving disposition of claims set forth for the period of November first through the thirtieth, two thousand fifteen.
Alright, anyone here to speak to a claim, please come forward?
Mark Campa, fourteen eighty-five Holmes Road, Central City, Nebraska.
Okay, tell us about your claim.
Uh, this is on, uh, October eleventh. I was driving down O Street, hit a pothole right there on, uh, Salt Valley Creek Bridge, I believe it is. Anyway, wiped out the oil pan on my car which is gonna end up costing me about three thousand dollars 'cause I'm gonna have to pull the motor, have it gone through and the motor's only about five thousand miles on it. I sent pictures with, uh, email and I just got the notice, uh, this weekend as far as coming in here.
Questions from the council? Alright, um, we'll have you grab a seat and, uh, our city attorney will come up and talk to us about your claim.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeff Kirkpatrick, Lincoln City Attorney. Uh, we received the claim from Mister Campa. Like many pothole claims, there was never a dispute or an issue as far as whether a pothole existed or at the location that Mister Campa suggested it existed. The question was whether the city had noticed and an opportunity to fill the pothole before the damage occurred to his vehicle. Our records show, um, that the first notice we had that there was a pothole at that, uh, address was on October twelfth and the city went out on that day and filled the pothole at least temporarily and then a more permanent, uh, repair was made in November. And I believe the, um, his issue occurred on October twelfth, so there was not an opportunity for the city to fill the pothole prior to the damage to his vehicle. October eleventh, his, his damage happened on the eleventh.
Could you talk to us about the, just give us a basic on the Torque Claims Act of the, the state ordinance or the state law?
Well, it, it comes down to, and we see a lot of pothole claims and that, that comes down to, was the city acting reasonably or were we negligent? And so if we would have had notice, for example, on October first and had an opportunity to go out and fill it in, didn't, his car was damaged on October eleventh, I think this is the kind of claim we would probably be recommending to the city council that it be paid. But since, uh, that, the damage occurred on October eleventh, we didn't receive notice of that on October eleventh. We had a, um, report, uh, from a member of the public on, well, actually I think it was the street crew noticed it on October twelfth, immediately came out and filled it in. And you can't fill a pothole before you know about it. We acted as quickly as we could once we were aware of the defect.
Questions for Jeff? John?
You may recall, we had another claim several months ago out on Westo. Was that anywhere near this vicinity? There was a lady who's, you know, she even went out and served tea to the Public Works people working nearby.
You know, I'm not sure what the timeline was of that. Uh, I remember the claim, but I don't have any recollection of, of the timeframe. I think it was earlier before the, before this October date, but I wouldn't swear to it.
I'm just wondering the proximity of this pothole versus the prior one and if maybe we're needing to do more follow-up to ensure a pothole doesn't reemerge?
Well, I can tell you that we, that the, uh, street crews have been watching this area for some, there's some joints that were getting larger and so they were keeping an eye on that. I think that's why they noticed it on October twelfth because there, there was a rough patch there. But the repair, I mean, they, they temporarily filled it on the twelfth and then came out in November and did a more permanent repair to it.
Other questions for Jeff? Alright, thanks Jeff.
Thank you.
Anyone, please come forward?
I don't wanna call Jeff the liar, but I call all the time. Terry Pope Gonzalez, founder of the Neighborhood Association out there. I call John Camp, I call Carl, uh, Carl Eskridge, called the mayor's office, I called Lynn Quinzer, I called Roger Feigard, I call everybody, call the police department, call Assistant Chief, um, Brian Jackson, call Detective Chad Barrett, and nobody listens. I don't know that man. Do I know you? Laid eyes on him when I came in. Now, I don't know why we pay wheel tax, 'cause guess what? They gotta come up here and they gotta beg. We have the worst roads I've ever seen. Yes, I am from Colorado. Colorado's worst roads beat your best roads. Now that man right there is coming up here and he's gotta beg for you guys to take care of his vehicle. It's really funny, let it be one of yours and you're right out there. Now, I didn't know I was gonna talk for him. Don't look at me like that, okay? That's why I've got my glasses on so I can see, okay? Now, I'm, I'm trying to give Jeff some, we know I don't like Jeff, so I'm trying to cut him some slack. So now listen, people like that get tired of begging. You guys are the city government, you work for us. We do not work for you. Now I'm not gonna even sign this, 'cause you know who I am and every single one of you know where I live. You, young lady, you definitely know where I live. All of you. Carl, you've been to my house. You've been inside my yard. You know where I live? So you know what? I'm not that far from Westo, am I? And I call all the time. Do you know my voice, John? Do you know my voice? I don't even gotta say my name, do I? Now I call all the time and we're tired. He doesn't even live in Lincoln. All he's trying to do is come into the neighborhood, to come downtown. Is, is the beep up? Am I done?
No, you've got a couple minutes.
Oh honey, you know what, you know what? 'Cause I'm gonna be every single one of these. I'm gonna speak too.
Alright, anyone else wishing to speak? Alright. Alright, we'll go on to the next item, please.
Alright, next would be item twenty-three, approving a cooperative agreement with the N D E Q regarding state of Nebraska grant funding from the Stormwater Management Plan Program.
Good afternoon, my name is Ben Higgins. I'm with the Public Works Department. This agreement with N D Q is the tenth agreement we've had for the tenth year in a row on this. And so our match on this is twenty percent and so that match comes from the stormwater bond. And so part of the stormwater bond that we have goes for stormwater quality projects and so we use the match from that fund from the stormwater bonds. So we use this, uh, we use this money here for requirements that are required by the state, uh, because we have a stormwater permit. So we use that for water quality monitoring, we use it for staffing, some of our staffing for public education and outreach, illicit discharge, and we do some water quality projects at, projects for that, including like we did some part of the Antelope Creek projects for that and some other projects with that. So if there's any questions on that?
Questions, Cindy?
Yeah, I just had a couple questions on the agreement, thank you. On page one of five, I guess, um, they talked about the, uh, that we agreed to submit a progress report by July thirty-first of each year that talks about the project activity for the first seven months of the year?
Uh, yes ma'am.
Okay, so can you tell me what projects we, we have in the queue that we're gonna be doing? Is that already in owned quantity?
Uh, so for example, what we've done Antelope Creek projects, uh, what we usually do, uh, we're doing the MSC Wash Bay, for example, we'll be paying for that as part of that. What we do is we do those projects, we put them in the queue when we do the bond issue and we get ready for the next C I P and so we're doing that right now. We're getting projects in the queue.
So we're already in process of that?
Uh, yes, you are. We're getting ready for the next C I P. I think they're due like early February.
And then on page thirteen, I saw that it looks like that there was something added perhaps from last year's, it's underlined. Does that mean it was added to the previous contract?
Uh, I don't, I don't have a page thirteen. Can you read that to me?
I'm sorry, sure. It talks about if an urban stormwater pipe drainage system is being designed to connect to an existing stormwater, stormwater pipe drainage system, both systems must be evaluated, determine any pipe deficiencies. The starting hydraulic grade line for the new system must be determined from a downstream analysis of the existing pipe system.
Okay, I think you're on the next agenda item.
Oh.
That's okay. We're talking about the N D Q grant.
Item twenty-three.
What's your, what's your, looked like you're reading from is from the text from the next, the design standards.
Oh, okay, I apologize. It's all put together and it looks like in one document for me, so I apologize for that.
But I can answer that question at the next agenda item.
Can I answer it?
I will do my best. 'Cause I, I do have that here with me.
Yeah, and my question, I thought that sounded like a good provision. I just wondered how, if there's a degree that we look downstream for that at the pipes. Do you know the answer to that?
Uh, you want me to answer that now?
Let's wait until the next agenda item, please.
I'll wait.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead, Lauren.
Thanks for coming down, Ben. I, I noticed it said that the grant can't be used for, um, normal operations, maintenance, or flood control. So can you just describe a little more detail what, what this grant can do related to stormwater quality?
So what it relates to is we have a stormwater permit and we're required to do that by the state and by the federal government, so we can do things that relate to that stormwater permit. So we can help with water quality. For example, we did a lot of Antelope Creek, you know, a lot of work on Antelope Creek area there, so we did a lot of projects there. We can monitor for water quality. Uh, we do illicit discharge and we don't actually do that. The health department does that, but we, we cost, we pay for a lot of that that they do over there. We have a, we have like an intern and then we also have a staff person that does just water quality education. Uh, we also do a landscape program, uh, uh, what we call a water quality landscape and we and part of this grant money, we go out every year to people and we offer like about thirty to forty applications for people and they can do, uh, like water quality, like a rain garden or maybe depave or put in native landscaping in their yard and we'll pay up to fifty percent of that, up to two thousand dollars. So it's just various water quality things, a lot of educational things that, that we're doing with that kind of funding.
Thank you.
Other questions on the grant? Alright. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak to this item, please come forward? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next item.
Alright, next is item twenty-four, text amendment one five zero two-three, amending sections one through ten of chapter two point oh five entitled Stormwater Drainage Design Standards to Add Definitions to Provide Information Regarding the Drainage Criteria Manual to Update the Design Standards to Clarify References to Other Documents and Update the Design Standards to Match Provisions in Chapter twenty-eight oh three of the Lincoln Municipal Code entitled Regulations for Post-Construction Stormwater Management and Chapter Eight to the City of Lincoln's Drainage Criteria Manual.
Thank you. Uh, Ben Higgins again with Public Works. So what these are, these are guidances. You've already passed the ordinances for these, you've already passed the drainage criteria manual for these. These were passed back in early twenty-fourteen. And so this is kind of a companion document and it's part of the design standards and this is in section two point oh five. And so, uh, what we're doing here is we wanna get this companion document, um, uh, passed. And so what we, we've done a lot of outreach on this and we've done it quite a bit in the past. In twenty-twelve, we had the Mayor's Clean Water Task Force and they came up with several recommendations and those recommendations were, are, uh, kinda like our recommendations and there were some compromises made. And we passed those back in early twenty-fourteen. We followed up that, you know, as, as part of getting that passed, we met with several groups. We met with LEBA, the Chamber of Commerce, Home Builders Association, Realtors Group, and we had some ad hoc meetings with them and that's where we came up with some compromises on that. And again, those were approved, those ordinances were approved in, uh, early twenty-fourteen. Also in twenty-fourteen, we'd had webinars that the city sponsored and we offered all the local consultants so they could learn more about stormwater quality requirements. Uh, we sent information out during twenty-fourteen and twenty-fifteen to all, about different venues that were going on, different webinars that other people were sponsoring to all the consultants. And then early this year, we sent out a letter to all the developers and consultants saying, hey, we're gonna have this called Build Greener Program. And we would, on that, we offered to fund conceptual, conceptual conservation stormwater designs. And we've actually had three, uh, different developers, uh, agree to do that and we finished one of those and are working on two more of those. Uh, we did also presented the stormwater ordinances to various, uh, uh, like American Council of Engineering consultants. Uh, spring twenty-fifteen, we presented the stormwater ordinances. Uh, we met, we asked the different consultant groups if they wanted to have, uh, individual presentations on it to their organization. We did that to seven consultant groups. And then we've also coordinated, we've had several green infrastructure projects, there are several water quality design projects we've done throughout the years. Uh, Lewis Ballfield, uh, we've helped fund P Street, uh, N Street, and so we've done several projects throughout the years. And then earlier, and actually this month, we've offered to do presentations on these water quality standards to the developers list that was on the, on the planning list, all the developers, consultants, and architects. And so, you know, we're willing to talk to anybody or meet with anybody to talk about these. And so the major change to this is in, uh, section, in section two point oh five is in, or in chapter two point oh five is in the section ten of the water quality standards. Uh, but there's also a lot of minor revisions and consistencies we've done. Uh, I've taken out a lot of the acronyms in there 'cause, uh, we just love acronyms, but I don't like them, so I took a lot of them out. Uh, we also had the word, uh, like Nebraska Department of Water Resources in there and there's no longer Nebraska Department of Water Resources, it's Nebraska Department of Water Quality. And so we've done a lot of corrections in there, a lot of clarifications, and then one of those clarifications, uh, Ms. Lamb, was the one that you were talking about on page thirteen. So any questions?
I'll go to Cindy, 'cause I know she's got a question.
Thank you. And, um, looking at this as the text meant, it makes a lot more sense to see all those lines underneath.
Okay.
So, um, sorry for calling that to your attention earlier, but, and that just was my, out of my curiosity, I wondered how far down the stream do we look at the pipes in order to make sure that the existing pipes are up to standard with what we're, when we're putting new pipes in?
Well, a lot of the time, uh, we've passed ordinances back in about mid-two thousands that said you got, if you have open channels, you kinda need to leave them open and that's called like minimum quarter requirements. And so it was way back when, if you kinda look at Antelope Creek, uh, compared to like Stevens Creek, like Antelope Creek, there's maybe one or two tributaries to it. And if you look at Stevens Creek or like, uh, southeast Upper Salt Creek, you know, there's three or four or half a dozen tributaries to it. three or four, or half a dozen tributaries to it. So a lot of the times in new developments, you don't really have a big drainage system down to it, you know, unless you're doing like a redevelopment or something like that, there's really not huge amounts of drainage system to it. But, you know, we have this problem in the older parts of town where we just don't want to have somebody upsize a pipe or something like that, and then all of a sudden bring a lot more drainage downstream. And so when we do big projects, we do them from downstream to upstream, and in fact, we have one over there, like 8th and Harrison, or 8th and Park area there, that if we were to do the whole thing, would be like four or five million dollars, so we're doing, you know, like about a million dollar pieces at a time on that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Other questions? I'll have you take a seat, and we'll have her come forward. Yeah?
I'd like to know what the compromises are. See, where the neighborhood was stranded for three days, so I'd like to know what the compromises were, where can I find it? Because, see, we were stranded three days, and not one of you came to check on us, not one of you. But Haymarket Park sure got ready for a game, didn't they? Bob and Leanne Schaefer had to beg the Red Cross to come help them. Now, I'm a little bit higher up, and everybody knows I'm a protected property, so we didn't get it, but we were stranded for three days. And you know what, and on his stuff, does that cover the cost when those people are going to sue you for that lady's death? Does that cover the cost? Who's checking on that? Because I'd like to know. Because when it happens to my family, understand, I'm going to be up here. So, I'd like to know the compromises. Somebody want to tell me?
We'll have Ben answer that question for you.
Okay, I'm going to stand here, okay?
I prefer to have you sit down, so he can respond to your questions.
Now, you know what, when they're fancy attorneys, they all stand up here, what's the problem?
He's the applicant that's bringing the item forward, and you're testifying.
I'll stand right here.
Thank you.
These are water quality standards, so these are for fairly minor events, so when you do for water quality, you want to get the most amount of storms you can get. So these are done for 80% of the storm events, so 80% of the storm events in Lincoln are 0.83 inches or less. And so what these, these are what these water quality standards are for, so they're not really for major events. And so the compromise we had, when we originally had the recommendations from the Clean Water Task Force, they recommended that we treat 90% of all the rainfall events for developments and 80% for all redevelopments. And so we compromised on that, and we did 80% for developments and 70% for redevelopments. And so that's, and so the higher amount of rainfall you got to treat, the bigger kind of a maintenance facility you're going to have to have. And the other deal we had was a one-year sunrise clause on that, because these ordinances were effective in January 2014, are not effective, but that's when they were passed. And so originally, we're going for a one-year sunrise on that, and so, and then we compromised on that, and said we'll do a two-year sunrise, and that's why these will be effective in February 2016. So those were the two compromises we had, so.
Okay, questions? All right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ben.
I'd like a copy of that, where do I get it?
You can get it.
You want to send me one?
You can get her a copy.
Okay, the copies of all of these are on the website, you just go to Lincoln.gov.
I don't have internet.
I could mail them.
Yeah, we'll get you a paper copy of it.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. All right, we'll move on to the next item.
All right, next is item 25, Appeal by Carl Eskridge of the Startran Advisory Board Action, approving the Transit Development Plan and the Near-Term Route Changes that are part of the DDP.
Are you the applicant for this item? Is it?
I have no idea, I don't know if there's such a thing as an applicant in this instance.
I think our sponsor is Mike Davis, and we'll have you speak right after them, is that okay?
That's absolutely fine.
Excellent, thank you very, thank you very much.
Mike Davis, I'm the Transit Manager for Startran. And we have Thomas Whitman here with Nelson Nygaard, who has been a consultant on this project.
Okay, tell us about it.
I think the important thing to start off with is why are we looking at doing a Transit Development Plan? You know, one of the things we wanted to take a look at is, you know, the ridership, you know, of the existing system while growing, has not necessarily been growing on the local route side, the UNL routes have been growing, we wanted to, we looked at and heard that there was a series of operational issues, such as on-time performance, as well as, you know, how the transit center operates, you know, needed some improvements. One of the other things, we looked at some of the historical data, and there was consistent, you know, demands from the public, like, we want better service from the transit system, we want later service, we want more frequent service. So as a part of this Transit Development Plan, we took a look at a series of, you know, I call it three-legged stools, we took a look at market research, we took a look at how the existing system is operating, and we took into account what the public's responses were to what their feel for what the needs in the community were. And so overall, we looked at the origin and destination of various employers, you know, throughout the region, we looked at the demographics of the area, you know, looked at where folks with disabilities, where the elderly, where, you know, folks with more kids lived, where minorities lived, you know, to give us an idea of where some of those areas of higher need might be within the community. We also took a look at where the ridership for each one of the routes was happening right now, looking at the strengths and weaknesses of each one of the services, so that we know where things are operating well, and as importantly, where things are underperforming, where folks aren't using the services as much right now. We combined that technical analysis with a public outreach process, we had a series of outreach efforts before our recommendations, we had a TDP advisory group with Mr. Eskridge was a member of, we had two different open houses, we had multiple drivers' meetings, as well as we created a project website called the Build Your Own Transit System, where we had over 300 responses to help us understand what the priorities within the community might be. We took what we heard back from the market research, from the how the existing system was operating, as well as from the public, and developed three different alternatives. Each one of those alternatives had a different theme associated with it, and we went back out to the public and said, we heard what you had to say, here's three different ways we can begin addressing your needs. And, you know, we had, as a part of the outreach process, we created an online survey that allowed folks to respond to what they thought worked well and what didn't work well, we had over 300 responses to that. We had public, you know, two different open houses as well, we had talked with the Project Advisory Committee as well, and we engaged the operators, you know, to help us understand which one of the alternatives worked best. We took what, there was no one consistent theme that folks said, I like alternative A versus alternative B, but we took what folks liked the best from each one of the alternatives, more frequent service, later evening services, more direct services, quicker services, and created what we called the Preferred Alternative. Well, we presented this at a public hearing about a month ago, and as a result of some of the feedback we received from the public hearing, we've made some additional potential changes to the Preferred Alternative.
And that brings us to where we're at today. I wanted to add in that Mr. Christensen was also on that advisory committee, so we appreciate both of you participating. And I like to relate where we're at today with the tradition I grew up with, and that was I had a tradition of making quilts with my mom and my grandma, and as part of that quilt-making process, we would put together squares, and then they would be sewn together and quilted into a quilt. And in this process, we have been putting these squares together over the last 11 months. We have evening service that is being added as part of this plan. We have been trying to make the service easier to understand by making Saturdays the same as weekdays. We have improved the frequency with 30-minute service all day on O Street, we have better frequency on the West Day and Gaslight in the middle of the day. We have improved our transfer, the plan improves our transfer system downtown, whereas right now, we have transfers that are five minutes apart as buses come in and leave. In this new scenario, we have a pulse system where buses come in every 15 minutes, and they dwell for three to five minutes while everybody transfers, and then they move on, so you can actually get off a warm bus and typically get on another warm bus without even waiting. So that's an exciting part of this plan. We have a new crosstown route that is added in the northeast quadrant that also connects with downtown, it also connects with a route that travels down south. Our speed and reliability is greatly improved, routes have a straighter direction, they have, the routes have also, they're, basically, I guess the word to put it is, it's a simplified network, improving speed and reliability. We have looked at adding bus stops so that people can know where to access the bus, service is more direct, and in essence, competitive with the automobile. And so, again, these different pieces of this quilt, we have been bringing together, and we have, what we have today is the plan that you have before you. And we're excited about the public that has come forward in this, and, as well as the input that we receive from our stakeholders, from drivers, from various aspects of the community. And we're going to continue to make this better and better. We're excited about new service to the airport and how that that will function, we're excited, again, as we kind of work through smaller type issues, we're excited to continue to improve this. What, the bottom line to the plan that we see today is we're expecting a 5% increase in ridership after three years, and that's very exciting. It moves beyond the ridership improvements that we're seeing today, which is below 1% per year, and that's a great improvement, and hopefully, we can build upon that momentum through this improvement. And with that, that's our introduction.
All right, questions, Cindy?
Thank you. Mike, thanks for being here today, and Mr. Whitman also. I know that since the meeting before the advisory board, we've had an opportunity to talk a number of times, and that, there seems to, was a feeling that maybe once we narrowed it down from three alternatives to one, that the public really didn't feel like they had enough time to digest what that one was and to input. I did appreciate, I sat in that advisory meeting, and I did appreciate that you guys made some little tweaks based on the testimony that day. But one of the things that I'm going to be proposing today, and my colleagues are aware of this, and you are also, Mike, is that we put this on a date certain for a vote, extending it out till February 8th, so that we can have four meetings throughout the city for citizens, and so I appreciate your cooperation in that. And as I understand it, Mike, February 8th is the date that works best for your department and everyone involved, correct?
Yes, we have set aside February 8th if the desire is to bring this back at that point, that works well for us, as well as the consultant.
Okay, and I have shared, you and I have gone back and forth on the dates that work, and the dates we have are the week of January 19th, the meeting is the 19th, 20th, 21st, and 22nd in libraries, and I'll give that, the locations later for anyone that's sitting in the audience. And those dates, we've checked back and forth so that they work for you, right?
Yes, yep, thank you.
Thank you, no, I appreciate you being here and being willing to work with me and the citizens to do that, thank you.
Go to Carl.
Great, thank you. I'm grateful for Cindy's interest in the issue, certainly, it impacts our community a great deal. Also, and Roy, for participating with me with the advisory group, and it was really an interesting process, and Thomas, want to thank you for your work, you impressed me with not only the skills you bring to the task, but how you approach the task, and really wanting to maximize the impact of our transit system in the community while minimizing the negative impact on existing riders. So, going back to Mike's analogy of quilting, I have quilters in my family, and I know that always one thing that quilters do is that you never make a perfect quilt, you know, there's always, even if it is perfect, you always make a mistake, an intentional mistake in there, just because you can't have perfection, you know, it's just something to strive for, so I think obviously that's something that we're hoping to get as close as possible, but thank you.
Larry?
Mike, you mentioned the expected outcome being about a 5% increase in ridership, and you sounded really positive about that. For people who aren't as close to the data, why is 5% exciting? I mean, it sounds like a really small number, can you put some context to that and help us understand why that's celebrating, we're celebrating?
Good question. Getting people to ride the bus is a little bit of a slow process, and the way I look at it is it's one person at a time, and once someone is willing to kind of take that step and get on the bus, they tend to continue to ride the bus. And I know even, it was probably about four or five months ago that I said, okay, I'm going to take that step and ride the bus. And yes, taking that step was a big step, but I'm to the point now where if I miss the bus, I'm upset. It's, it became part of my routine, and that's why 5% is such an important aspect of this plan, is it may seem like an insignificant number, but those 5% continue to ride, and it builds on that momentum. And we also have something like 20% of our riders change over every year anyways, and so we continually have new riders injected into the system, and we want to make that work for the greatest whole of the community. So it may seem insignificant, I think, I think over time, we're going to see the significant impact of that, and Thomas may have something to add to that.
I think one of the things that I've learned over the years is you under-promise and over-deliver, and there were, you know, the 5% represents the lower range of what the expected ridership outcomes, you know, will be. Overall, if we look at what we've looked at doing similar types of restructures in Colorado Springs, or Oklahoma City, or Huntsville, Alabama, the results were significantly higher than that, but, you know, I look at this as I want to be conservative with what the expected outcomes are.
Can you put some numbers to the 5% to help us understand what it means in real figures?
Right now, we have 2.5 million, basically, one-way trips a year, and so, doing the math, off the top of my head.
1.75.
That was the math major was.
You're talking about 5% more, 125,000.
125,000, thank you, John. So, yeah. Sorry, didn't have that number.
Okay. Roy?
Well, this is exciting to me, because this is a first step for what I hope to see, but what I'd like to know here today is where you see Startran five years from now, 10 years from now, you know, what is the vision for the future, and how does this plan fit in?
I think Startran has, right now, about 50% of our riders are transit-dependent, and this is a very important statistic, it shows, reflects the important need that we're fulfilling today. And I think all our riders, including choice riders or transit-dependent riders, are very interested in making the service better. If you're absolutely dependent on the bus, you want to be able to get around, you want to be able to go shopping, you want to be able to go to the doctor, go to your job, go to school, and be able to make that a part of your life. And right now, it's very difficult to do that. When the service ends at 7:00 at night, it's limited on Saturdays, and has no service on Sundays, the frequency on a couple of the routes is two-hour frequencies in the middle of the day, bus breaks down, and that bus doesn't come, somebody could be waiting on that curb up to four hours. And that is a difficult scenario to see today, and I know in our office, we get calls every day of someone who missed their transfer, or something didn't work quite right for them, and we want to get to the point where this works well for the community of Lincoln, and as it works well for our current And, and as it works well for our current riders, both transit dependent and choice, we will continue to build that momentum to where it works for a great majority of those who are riding and those in our, those future riders in our community. And that momentum you can see happen in other, you know, cities in the Midwest. Ames, Iowa has built a fast-growing system where they have tremendous ridership and, and it's now working. And you don't have those four-hour waits to wait for the bus. You have buses that are coming by 15, 20 minutes apart and it becomes very convenient to use. And that's the future system that we want to move towards. And I think this builds a strong foundation for that in the future where we have really good routes, we slowly increase that frequency, we slowly increase the span of service and build a strong ridership. And, and that momentum itself continues to help the system grow in a good direction.
Okay, so would it be safe to say that we're looking for two things, two outcomes here? One is to improve the service for everyone and to increase the number of choice riders?
Yes.
John?
Yes, I appreciate what you're doing here. As I've traveled around the country and the world, I always like seeing public transit systems. If you take, first of all, your two and a half million one-way transits, Mr. Davis, is that, does that include or exclude the campus bus and some of our Big Red Express? Or does that include those?
So our two and a half million one-way trips does include our UNL campus ridership, yes?
So do you have information with you that you could break that down so we could, and what I'm looking for is getting to the regular bus system without that, without Big Red Express and other special transits?
I, go ahead.
We have, I mean.
I think you have somebody coming forward with some statistics for you.
We, we can provide, you know, what the assumptions were and what routes were included and what routes were not included as part of the ridership increase. The UNL services do not have a recommendations associated with them, so we're not anticipating an increase in ridership for the UNL services. We are anticipating increases for the regular local bus services.
Well, we should get more UNL because we're in the Big Ten now, we're expanding. But, Mr. Davis, looks like you may have some data there for us.
Yes, so on our regular fixed routes, we have about 1.4 million one-way trips. And for UNL inter-campus service, we have about 350,000 one-way trips. And then we have some various other services. We have our school booster service, which accounts for another 125,000. And some various other services that we provide, Big Red Express, et cetera.
Okay, well, you're still about a half million short, but I was looking, I want to get to that 1.4 million. Is that what you think you're predicting would be the 5% increase or on the whole system if you have 200, two and a half million total that you think we'll get that 125?
The, the 5% number was based on the local bus ridership.
So we're maybe looking more at 90,000 one-way trips. Looking at our system, looking at our fare box charges and all on those regular fixed routes, do you have some observations for us? And the reason I ask that is I know over the years I've been on the city council, we've actually reduced fares, we've given some specials on books and so forth through various organizations, or ticket books through organizations, and we still just kind of plateaued there. Just wonder how that factors in.
The, we assumed as a part of the ridership estimating that, you know, the fare structure would remain constant as it is right now, as you have shown through some of your, some of the processes that you have here, such as the low-income fare pass, that you can get, you know, that fare can be a policy tool to increase ridership significantly. One of the things that's, a community that I have worked in, and, and this happened within the last year, went fare-free and, you know, went from having a fare to not having a fare in Missoula, Montana, University City as well, University of Montana is there, a little bit smaller than Lincoln, but they did have an increase of 35 to 40% increase in ridership within one year after that was implemented. So fares can be a powerful tool to increase ridership, a very powerful tool. I might add that much like some of the straightening out of routes and simplifying the services, those steps were taken in advance of, you know, going fare-free in that community. So in many ways, the process that we went through in Missoula was very similar to the process that we laid out here.
What's the population of Missoula?
About 70,000, 75.
Thank you. Jane.
Well, you know, I appreciate all the, the time and effort of so many people in, in putting forward this study, but a couple of things I noticed, the biggest, I guess loudest voice was increasing the service in the evening or lengthening it to later hours. So I was kind of curious, the proposal that came out, it was a staggered time for some routes. And I wondered if, if that is the most effective way to market the bus routes by saying, hey, we're going to increase the evening hours, you asked for it, we delivered, but it's inconsistent. Does that, would that hurt our, our likelihood to increase ridership or how are people going to figure out, okay, wait, this route is 7:00 PM and this one is 8:00 PM? And is it your recommendation that it be consistent?
It is standard industry practice to look at when services should end based on what the demand, potential demand is on a particular route. And, you know, in an ideal world, we would have had more of the routes end later, but from a funding perspective, we simply had to make choices in terms of what we could afford to go later and what we could not afford to go later. And so the choices, there were two routes, the, the O Street Route and the Havelock Route. And we said these routes are, you know, represent the best opportunities for ridership in the late evenings from a demographic perspective, as well as from a destination perspective in Gateway Mall as well as SEC, that those two routes should be prioritized, you know, to run late, an hour later than some of the others. It, in, again, in an ideal world, we would have liked to have more routes end at nine o'clock or even 10 o'clock. And those are part of the plan, you know, those are actually in the plan to, as part of the, you know, expansion scenarios. But given the existing funding levels, this was, we felt, the best compromise to put the services where we felt it would be most successful in the evening times and to prioritize those areas.
Do you want to go?
I have another question. So when we talk about the 5% increase in ridership, does that translate into a net increase in the revenue for Star Trans or are we just kind of treading water with the increase? And what is the recommendation for additional funding as, as a consultant? Incrementally phasing in an increase in funding for Star Trans to achieve maximum success and to really hit that 5% increase?
Typically, typically there are, you know, there is an increase in, with ridership increases, there is an increase in revenue as well. What that revenue increase is depends on the proportion of folks paying cash fares or in your case, you have a very, there is a very low monthly, you know, you know, pass for those, the folks that, you know, have a less ability to, to pay. So you, it's, there's, you can't say that it's a, with a 5% increase in ridership, you're going to see a 5% increase in revenue. The answer is, you know, I'm, I'd be speculating without taking a deeper look at what that might be. It's going to be somewhere. It's, it's going to be an increase in, in revenue, but not necessarily a 5% increase in revenue. You know, the, other agencies have looked much like, you know, depending on what your goal is, some agencies have looked at reducing fares in order to increase ridership. Other agencies have looked at increasing fares to increase revenues to help pay for some services. You know, generally, you know, for smaller systems, and I consider, you know, Lincoln to be in the smaller category, the payoff of increasing fares to help pay for improvements such as running later in services, generally you're not going to generate sufficient revenues to make a significant dent in meeting those needs.
Go ahead.
I just want to get back to those numbers just because knowing, sort of the numbers you're talking about will help us in the end come back and reevaluate and the success of the program. You said 5% increase in ridership on the local city fares, so on the 1.4 million, not the 2.5 million?
That's correct.
And that's 70,000 rides?
70 to 90,000, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions? All right, we'll have you sit down and we'll probably have some rebuttal later, but before we go on to having regular testifiers, is there anybody here tonight that is using public transportation and needs to catch a bus? I would have them come and testify first before we go into the regular. Sir, we'll have you come.
Yes.
I will need to catch a bus at some point.
Okay.
I think you're right.
Do you, would you like to come forward now or do you want to wait a second?
I would be willing to.
Okay, we'll, we'll have you come forward now.
My name is Jeff Altman, ALTMM. I live at 2319 Winding Way. I had the good fortune and opportunity to serve on the Transit Development Plan Advisory Committee. And I did want to say that what I saw as compared with things from previous years, this was probably the most scientific and thorough process that I've seen on behalf of Star Trans. Mr. Whitman did an excellent job with developing things. By what I could see, there was a great deal of openness about figuring out what was going to work best for people. I know also there is some discussion of dollars and cents in all of this and that's an important thing to consider. If you take an individual who owns an automobile and even one that maybe shouldn't still be on the road, the average cost per year is about $7,000. I know I've got a daughter who's 19 and we're paying for that car. It's expensive to run a vehicle. Now, my wife and I are both blind and we use public transportation. For the two of us, probably our average cost is less than $500 a year for public transportation. Now, I bring this up from the standpoint of what people can use that money for, that difference in between driving a car and, and owning a car, all of those expenses as compared with riding a bus. $7,000 at today's interest rate, I would guess would probably am up to rise out to about $75,000 towards a house. That might help some folks that are trying to sell some real estate, might make people more invested in our community. It's also money that people might use to purchase things from various businesses. It also means that people have the ability to invest in their education, to become better educated, better skilled, and perhaps start earning more money and increasing the tax base. So these are all things we have to consider. Then there is also the matter of what all of those cars do to our roadways. We invest a lot of money in repairing those roadways, we invest a lot of money in widening those streets. You can only widen streets so far and then you end up with a parking lot. We also have to consider what is doing to the environment. Lincoln's population, I guess, is somewhere in the neighborhood of 300,000 now. Probably at least a third of that are people who are driving cars. That's a lot of vehicles and it's a lot of pollution. I think that even though this plan is going to make things a little more challenging for some folks, myself included, I'm going to have to transfer to get to work. It builds such a strong foundation for the future for public transportation that it's worth going that distance. It's worth going through those growing pains now. The other thing is that what Star Trans really needs is more money. I mean, it's simply a reality. The cost of doing business has gone up, I'm sure all of you are aware of that. And the demand for public transportation is going to go up. We keep growing and we've got to be able to get people to where the businesses are. We have to be able to get people to work. And private cars are not going to do that, especially for low-income folks. I am an employee of the Nebraska Commission.
One minute.
I am an employee of the Nebraska Commission for the Blind. And a big part of our goal is to help blind folks find employment. That's why we basically exist. The need for public transportation to allow people to get into entry-level positions and be able to work their way up to become taxpayers is very important to the blind community. Blind folks don't like having to live on public support. I've been working for, going on 30 years, most blind people I know want to be in that position, that they're working the same as everyone else. And so I, even though, as I said, this is going to be a challenge for many folks to get accustomed to a new system and for some folks, it means walking a lot further to get to a bus. I think that in the long run, this is what's going to make things much better for everyone. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, please come forward, yeah.
My name is Sitaram Jaswal. S-I-T-A-R-A-M is the first name, last name is Jaswal, J-A-S-W-A-L. And I live at 2330, 3325 Grimsby Lane in Lincoln, 68502.
Thank you.
I work at the university and I've been using the bus for about 40 years. And so I catch right now the Arapaho bus from a spot about four blocks south of Van Dorn on 17th Street. Incidentally, this, that location, four blocks south of Van Dorn on 17th Street has always had bus service since I've lived there for 40 years. And I find it obviously very convenient to walk about two blocks. Now with this new program, of course, I, the, the gentlemen have done a great job in terms of figuring out what is best for our city. But when I look at this map of the proposed bus routes, so in the currently, there are two buses that are running through this area, that is the ones I can think of. One is the South Point Bus, other is the Arapaho Bus. Now, for the service in this area, it has been, it proposed to replace it with a Sheridan Bus. And it, I find it reasonable. However, it runs only every 60 minutes all day. There is no faster service in the morning or evening during rush hours. And it, actually the Saturday service was added, I guess recently after people's suggestions. So either, the, either of the buses available to me, which would be 13 or Sheridan, I would have to walk seven blocks, which I am willing to do, I guess. But the, I think it's important for the people living in this area, incidentally, this Sheridan area, right now, this proposed area, except for Sheridan, there is no bus service between roughly 56th Street in the east and 13 in the south. And then Pine Lake Road, I'm sorry, 13 in the west and Pine Lake Road to the south and, and South Street. So it's a very huge, like 20% chunk of the city of Lincoln, whose service with this proposed thing, in my opinion, in view of only one hour service all the time would be significant deterioration of the service to the people living in this area. So what I would like to see is if this, this system, proposed system is maintained that, that faster, the half an hour service should be added at the busy hours in the morning and, and in the evening to this Sheridan route. Which then I think would make things simpler for the people who, whose service would be deteriorated in terms of what is available now. What is available now to me is much better than what is proposed here, but, so I request
One minute.
I request that. I request that this change for faster service during the busy hours be added to this route Sheridan. Thank you.
Questions?
Questions?
All right, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
All right, we'll go with, do we have anyone else doing bus routes? All right, you've been waiting patiently, we'll have you come forward.
Thank you. My name's Richard Schmeling. I came here before the council in August, introduced myself, gave you a rough idea of some of the background that I have in terms of transportation expertise, and I said I'd be back to see you. Well, I'm back. First of all, I want to wish you a very Merry Christmas, all of you. I want to thank Councilman Eskridge and Cindy and whoever else got this to this point where, where we're slowing things down and we're taking a hard look at things. And I think that's absolutely essential. What this council does with this issue, in my opinion, is one of the most important decisions you will make throughout your term of office. It impacts people that strongly. Now, what we have here is we have a very good consultant whom I admire and respect. We have a good consulting firm. They've done a good job, but the contract with the consultants was flawed. As a result, the preferred alternative is badly flawed. How did this happen? I don't know. Maybe City Attorney knows. But whoever wrote the contract with the consultants had the consultants assume that Startran would get no more money for 2016 and 18 than they got in 2015. Carl, you're going to have to help me out. I've forgotten my theology. But when Moses came down from Mount Sinai with those big stone tablets, I think there were Ten Commandments on there, and I don't remember one of them being, "Thou shalt not give Startran enough money to run a good service." I don't think that happened.
Send the fine crowd.
Okay, so, I'm football coach Riley, okay? And they hire me to have a good football team, except my contract reads this. When I go out on recruiting, I can recruit quarterbacks, and I can recruit three quarterbacks, but I have to cut off my squad three wide receivers. What coach is going to want to work under those conditions? It doesn't work. So, what we have here, as Mike DeKalbe, the chairman of the Startran Advisory Committee, said, is we have a plan where we have Rob Peter to pay Paul. And that's what's happened to Mr. Jaswal. He had service, now he doesn't. What we are creating with this preferred alternative is we're creating transit deserts in the city of Lincoln. Great tracks where people have to walk blocks and blocks and blocks in order to get the bus. What's the answer? Let's stop looking at Startran like the ugly stepchild and starving it. For the past five years, operational funding for Startran has been absolutely flat. It's varied maybe a couple thousand dollars. It hasn't gone up. What's happened in the meantime? Driver expenses have gone up. Fuel expenses have gone up. The cost of printing schedules has gone up. A whole myriad of costs have gone up, and yet we give Startran the same operating money. That doesn't work. So, what have they done? They've cut service. And they continue to have to do that to live within their budget. But yet, there's no stone tablet says that we shouldn't give them more money so we can improve our public transit in Lincoln. So, that's what I think needs to happen. I'd like...
One minute.
What I'd like to do is I'd like to suggest that you separate the Transit Development Plan, which I think is pretty good, and go ahead and approve it, but you don't approve the preferred alternative because that's lousy. It stinks. Why? Evening service won't work. We'll have another speaker talk to you about that. But it doesn't go late enough on the routes. Crosstowns aren't crosstown, for God's sake. Route 27 doesn't go in the south part of Lincoln. It stops, it goes downtown on Vine Street. That's not a crosstown. 48th Street doesn't go in the south part of Lincoln. It goes and manders up the gateway and ends up at Vets Hospital. So, I really think that what we need to do is get those crosstowns going all across town so I don't have to go all the way down to 11th and O Street to go from 48th and Van Dorn, where I live, out to 70th and Vine. And by the way, under the new system, they cut, cut the Vine thing, so I'm going to have to walk from Gateway anyway. It's, it's just not acceptable for a city our size. The mayor wants us to be globally competitive. How can we be globally competitive with a bus system like this?
All right, questions for Mr. Schmeling? All right. Thank you very much, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is Don Nelson. I live at 2430 South Canterbury Lane. I've lived in Lincoln 38 of the last 46 years. I'm not currently a Startran user. I'm what's called a life cycle user. When I was 25 years old, had two baby daughters and one vehicle, I used the bus system. When I was 30 years old, and I had a full-time job at the State Capitol from eight to five, I used the bus system. But as I accumulated more wealth and took on more responsibility and another vehicle, I got away from public transportation, but I never fell out of love with it. I assume that someday, either a family member or a uniformed police officer will take away my car keys, and I'll be back on Startran, and I look forward to that day. But I'm not here today to advocate for specific service or level of service or routes. In fact, under this plan, I will lose the route that stops one baseball throw away from my doorstep. But that's not the point of me being here. The point of me being here is to advocate changing the look that we have towards Startran. Some of you were around, as was I, in 2007, when we put city and county government on a diet. But as we look around our downtown and see all the construction cranes pointing to the sky and the robust development that's taking place, and the square footage that's about to be launched, I think it's time we got back to restoring some of the resources that are necessary to provide a public transit system for a robust and growing community like Lincoln, Nebraska. Fortunately, I get to travel around North America, so I see many opportunities to get on public transit systems. We need to start looking at public transit in Lincoln as an economic development tool. We have people that are unemployed, underemployed, disabled. I would answer Ms. Barrett's earlier question this way. I think we could get 50% increase under the right circumstances. If we paired pricing with demand, if we partnered with private enterprise, I'm told over and over again from my friends in the business community, the single largest barrier is our low ability to attract people from these workforces where they've dropped away. So, if we could empower them by having a vigorous, robust, and muscular transportation system, I think that would create a new atmosphere in town. Two examples, we've already talked about Missoula, Montana. That's a great example, but we have one in our backyard. If any of you go out to the campus and watch those buses come by, they're full. They have beautiful equipment, they have tiny headways, and they move students, faculty, and staff all the time. Why did they get that way? Because the university looked at the transit system as a tool to grow itself, to attract employees, to attract students, and it's fabulous.
One minute.
And I think we can work that same magic elsewhere. Eight days ago, I spent the whole day in Omaha, Nebraska, and I counted at least a dozen locations where there were as many as 33 people standing in line to get on their public transit system in downtown Omaha. We can do the same thing here. It will be our own failure of our own imagination if we do not take advantage of this opportunity to fix a public transit system that used to work properly for our parents and grandparents. Thank you very much.
Hey, Don, I think we have one question for you here.
Mr. Nelson, I've got a question. I like, and this topic, I've asked this for years. If you were to list the top three goals or important elements of a public transit system, what, what would you say are number one? And I'm talking about things like price, headway, frequency, and so forth.
Before I answer your question, I have to tell you the basis of my answer. I'm here because I have flourished in Lincoln, Nebraska. I've been in government several times. I've been a businessman. I'm now retired twice. And I'm here to represent the people that need public transportation the most. Why? Because they don't have the command of the microphone that they need. So, I'm here to represent them. I would say my dream is to link the ground transportation system with employers so that people are moved from home to job site or from home to school in a fashion that allows them to accommodate their employer or their educational starting and stop times. We don't have that now. I, I'm not expert to know why, and I apologize for getting into this process later than earlier, but I chose to stay out of it because I agree with Mr. Schmeling. Once I heard that the handcuffs have been clamped on and that the intellectual underpinning of the whole study, and I have a master's degree in city planning, ancient, almost 50 years ago. So, I know that when you have the world's most fantastic consultant and say, "No more resources," it's going to put a crimp on what my goal is, which is probably an investment Law enforcement doesn't always pay for itself, but we have unlimited resources. Public education doesn't always pay for itself in the short term, but we have unlimited resources. Once we start thinking of public transportation in terms of how can it enhance our own economic growth, that's my dream.
Do you have a second or third? You're, you're really looking though at 30,000, which is fine. I don't, I'm not trying to mislead or lead you along.
I'd like to see our disabled community move about our community more flexibly. I'd like to see them rely more on the public transportation system rather than some of the private services that, which eat into their resources. I'd like to empower poor people so they can save anywhere from $5,000 to $15,000. The gentleman that had to leave said his one vehicle and their family cost $7,000. But if you drive other vehicles, they can cost a lot more than that. And depending on what their cost is and how much your loan is, it can be anywhere from $5,000 to $15,000 that could be invested in the community by people who don't need to be spending it on a private vehicle.
Thank you.
Thanks for asking.
Other questions?
You know, I feel like that old Pittsburgh Phillies baseball player, some of you may remember Willie Stargell. I may look old, John, but if you put the pitch real slow on the outside corner, it's going over the .360 wall.
Other questions?
I wish I could get it that far.
Thanks, Don.
And thanks for letting us have so much time on the agenda.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Please come forward. If you're going to speak, please come down to the front so we know that you're going to speak.
Good afternoon. Amy Dickerson with the Lancaster Event Center, Managing Director, address 4100 North 84th Street. I'm here at the persistence of Mr. Richard Schmeling, who I can't, must have called me about 20 times and brought this process to my attention. I'm just about 18 months at the Lancaster Event Center, and I met Mr. Whitman at our last hearing, and I believe I made the bold statement that we were the largest public facility not on the, on a bus route. And he agreed with me right on the spot, I believe. We might be the only Walmart not, not connected right next door as well, is that correct? Not to put you on the spot again. Okay, all right. I, you know, I, hats off to this process. It's very complicated. I really appreciated the quilt analogy. I totally get what, what Mr. Davis is trying to do. I'm embarrassed, as a manager of a public facility, that I didn't really think about. I think about making it just as accessible as possible. I was focused on very proud of free parking and ample parking and good parking. And when I got there, I got a lot of feedback of handicap parking, and I made sure I, I have plenty of that, no matter which event is or which, where the entrances are, that sort of thing. But I didn't think about folks that don't have a car, you know, until Mr. Schmeling brought it to my attention, and I admittedly also came in late to this process. But if you think about where Lincoln is growing, a big growth area is in East Lincoln, and the nearest bus route to the Lancaster Event Center is 14 blocks away. One of the other ways this came to my attention is I have employees that are walking to work in the winter. So, I also have lots of jobs that are open, 24/7, 18 hours a day, seven days a week out at the Lancaster Event Center. So, arguably, if we would consider adding the Lancaster Event Center as a strong anchor on the east side of Lincoln, and I know it's new to Lincoln, thinking about it, but if you have, don't get out there all the time, please come out there and see how much it's growing just every day out there, that potentially this change could pay for itself in terms of getting some people better employed, getting them jobs, that kind of thing, sales tax, getting them out shopping, Walmart and other places, and growing ridership, having an anchor very near to those other night routes that were mentioned, SCC and Havelock, to be another night anchor out there. So, for those of you that aren't familiar, we have over half a million people that come out to Lancaster Event Center every year, 270 events, something out there for everybody, and most of the events are free or very near free. Lots of interest represented, starting with our largest, one of our largest public events of the year, the Lancaster County Super Fair, 10 days every, every summer. But that's, we're busy and full year round, other than Nebraska football season for some reason. So, and we slow down just a little bit. But, but if folks want to come out for antique, craft, toy, train, motorcycle, beer, car, garage sales, kids, women, boat, RV, home, farm, just had the largest, second-largest farm show in the country there last week, would have been interesting for folks to come in, absolutely free. 400,000 square feet of farm exhibits, over two dozen kinds of animals, including some of the events that have been at the Pershing Auditorium are now out where we are, the Shrine Circus, 10 shows, very reasonable, reasonably cost to get in to see a circus with tigers and elephants and everything else. We are one of the, have a large equine, that's no secret, but we should be proud of that in Lancaster County, that we have a large equine. We, we do more equine events than the state fair does, as an example. And it's something to see. I never knew there were so many different kinds of horses, and it's really neat to see. So, so I don't know exactly how this process works, but I am just another voice for us to suggest that with Lincoln growing, there's a prime example of a facility that is crying to be served and allow all the community of Lincoln to enjoy the Lancaster Center. And I'm happy to take questions.
John?
Thank you, Ms. Dickerson. I want to relay something I think Mr. Nelson and those about this too. We've both been back in Washington, DC, and I lived in Annapolis a couple times, and I would commute on a Greyhound bus. We'd all go to the local parking lot, shopping mall, and hop on this bus, go down Independence Constitution Avenue, drop off, and then the night, it'd come pick us up and go. So, it was kind of this single service, but it worked around our hours, so we were able to handle that schedule. Now, you've got a situation where you get certain events and so forth, and part of my, my question is coming to you from a standpoint... and part of my question is coming to you from a standpoint of asking you, have you thought about in your future plans, maybe you have sort of the stopgap vehicles that might take people down to SCC where they could park in the campus, something like my Greyhound bus did in Annapolis for us. One of the things in Startran that we've grasped with is you get a base service there, but we also have responsibilities, requirements, and contracts with our drivers, for example. And you just can't bring them on for an hour and then say, gee, we're going to send you home. And so you get that start and stop thing. But I see where what you've mentioned with your different events and so forth, and even your employees, is that something you've ever considered that some meeting point, or maybe it's going over to, you know, some other point on these proposed routes or existing routes?
Hadn't even got there yet. We'd have to get a certain number of folks to be able to do that and get that organized, absolutely. It is something to think about. But I think with a half a million people, just visitor-wise, and those are unique visitors. Many of them come out multiple days because we have multiple-day events, and then many events are night and weekends. So we are cleaning up and getting ready during the week. So that whole employment angle is a whole another that isn't even in those figures that I gave to the consultant, you know, arguably pretty close to the end of the process.
I think with, again, what Mr. Nelson talked about on this economic development, you'd have that opportunity to supplement perhaps what Startran does, and that way it does it on the demand side, and maybe just be in the mornings and evenings, beginning of your staff. Maybe they go to another point and they cluster and ride.
Yeah, very good point. Good to think about.
Other questions? All right.
Very good. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else wishing to speak, please come forward if you're ready to speak.
Hardy?
Is this the best way to go?
Yes. Just be careful.
Yeah, no, you're fine.
Okay.
We'll let him go here.
Okay, where do I go to be?
Going straight forward.
Straight forward, right there.
You've got it.
You got it.
Microphone's right at your beard height.
Okay.
From beard.
On the other side. There you go.
Right there, perfect.
All right. There it is. My name's Hardy Holm. H-A-R-D-Y-H-O-L-M. And I'm from sixteen-seventeen Garfield Street. And this is probably going to seem like some unusual testimony, because I can see both good and bad aspects to this new plan. And I'm certainly in favor of improving transportation. I think there's some wins in this thing and some losses. It looks to me like, as near as I can tell, that the wins tend to be on the north side of Lincoln for some reason, and the losses tend to be on the south side, which I thought was one of the more growing areas in Lincoln. And we've heard a couple of testimonies to that effect. Now, I bought a place down close to Russ's, Sixteenth and Washington, Seventeenth and Washington. And I specifically bought it because I was pretty sure that in the area of Sixteenth and Seventeenth and close to A Street and South Street and all that, that probably as long as there's public transportation, it's going to exist there. But it looks like a lot of places in South Lincoln, people are going to really have to walk a lot further. And the transportation has actually gone downhill, so I guess that worries me somewhat. I like the idea of some increased ridership, or increased hours. Looks like most of that is on the north side of town. I would like to say that I was impressed when Mr. Nelson said with regard to the university buses, those things are incredible. I've ridden those occasionally. And they go from downtown campus to east campus. If you happen to be on the route of that thing, and anybody can ride it because it's part of Startran, it's just that the university has farmed it out to Startran. And those things go every ten minutes until nine o'clock at night, and I've got on there where I had to stand. The university students and faculty and people that live in those neighborhoods that just happen to be lucky enough to live between downtown campus and east campus, they really use that thing. And that might be a model of, you know, it's something that's actually working and is used a tremendous amount. And I guess that's kind of my advice, is that we need to probably think how we can improve. You know, if service goes downhill and you have to walk seven blocks, a lot of people aren't going to do that. And so the danger is that, in some cases, you might actually lose ridership here. And I don't know, I see positives and negatives. And that's just all I wanted to say. I just wanted to chime in and tell you how wonderful the university system is, since it's farmed out through Startran, and that it really, really gets used. And imagine a bus coming every ten minutes, all the way up until nine o'clock at night. And that's what they do.
John?
Mr. Holm, thank you for your testimony. Quick question.
Sure.
If you had, this goes back to priorities of the system, but if you had faster headways or more frequent service versus, and you still, and you had to walk a few blocks more, would you prefer that, or would you rather have less frequent service and have it close to your doorstep?
You know, for me, I don't mind walking a couple of blocks. Sometimes in the dead of winter, I'm not so keen on it. You know, crossing a busy street, that might be, for instance, I cross Forty-Eighth and Calvert once a week for something that I'm involved in. And I don't like walking across there. And on the current bus route, the bus turns and will let me off. I don't have to cross Forty-Eighth, and under the new system, I'm going to have to do that. I won't enjoy it. It's not really any further, but it's just crossing a busy street. I think probably more frequency, I don't know. So many people tell me that they that the frequency is an issue with regard to a job or communicating between one place and another, that maybe that's the most important thing to a lot of people. If you're an elderly person or somebody that really can't walk very far, then the answer might be the other thing. Close to your, where you get on the bus at, might be more important. Maybe there are people that really can't walk seven or eight blocks, or five blocks, or whatever. And they might be able to get on their block now, and maybe in the future, they may have to walk three or four blocks, and that might not be a possibility for them. It's a possibility for me.
Carl?
Thanks. Thanks, Hardy, for being here. Just a second. Got a question for you, Hardy. Okay. And to follow up with John's question, just one step farther. How about service later in the evening? Is that a desirable feature for you as well?
Well, that is one of the things that, when I was involved in some of the meetings that I said would be good. It seems like what's been going on for as long as I've been in Lincoln is gradually, the service has been chipped back earlier and earlier. And, you know, there are a lot of people that work second shift or whatever, you know. You're probably never going to get people in the city like Lincoln that are, you know, you're not going to get bus service till midnight or whatever for people that really work late, but a lot of times, people that work during the daytime, they may need to go somewhere for shopping or go into a restaurant or or whatever in the evening, and it would be nice for things to run a little bit later. Yeah, that's one of the things I supported.
Thank you, and thanks for your gift of music, too.
Well, you know, it is what it is. Sometimes it's good.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Bob Reeves, and I live at thirty-two thirty-six Dudley Street, and I just want to talk for a couple of minutes here. Chime in with what Mr. Holm said. I just wanted to share my recent experience in riding the bus. I have been a sporadic bus rider over the years, only usually using it in the winter when I didn't want to drive on the slick streets. But now that I'm retired, I've been volunteering at the public library, and I've recently started this fall volunteering at Bennett Martin. And the reason I decided to go down there instead of out to Isley was that I really wanted to go back downtown, because I used to work downtown, and I missed it. Well, then I realized, well, why don't I try using the bus? And so I got a senior pass, and I started riding the bus. And the first day that I rode it, I got down there fine, and then when I was done with my time at the library, I tried to run over to, well, I was confused about where the stops were. When I realized where the stop was I was heading for, I tried to run over there, and I got there three minutes after the bus, both the Bethany and the University Place bus had left downtown. So then I would have to wait an hour for the next bus to come. So then I thought, oh, I'll go take the campus bus, and I went up there to R Street and in front of the Union and got the campus bus, and got right home. So now I go all the time on the campus bus, because I live, as I said, you know, near Thirty-third and Holdridge. And so I have all the campus buses, as he said, all day long, ten minutes apart, plus if I want to take the University Place and Bethany, they're both there, too. And I do like the new configuration that's proposed for the University Place and Bethany. As I understand it, it would make them both go along Holdridge one direction or the other, both sides of Thirty-third and Holdridge. The way it is now, if I want to catch the Bethany, I have to be on the east side of Thirty-third and Holdridge. If I want to catch the University Place, I have to be on the west side of Thirty-third and Holdridge, because they don't both stop at the same stop. They used to in the old days, when the Havelock, University Place, and Bethany all came up there. But, you know, that's been a frustration. But I do definitely like the idea of increasing the having the buses run later at night, and I would like to see them all go to nine o'clock. I think there's a lot of things going on in the evening that people would actually make use of. I would, my wife and I would go down to movies if we thought we could take the bus, but we can't do that now. So there's a lot of arguments in favor of that. Anyway, that's all I wanted to say.
Great. Questions? All right. Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak, please come forward.
John Braisted, B-R-A-I-S-T-E-D, thirty-eight twenty-five South Nineteenth. One of the issues that is with the proposed alternative, preferred alternative, a number of people have made their housing choices based on the availability of public transport. I am one of those people. I have always considered what is available. Even though I have a car, I still do want to know that public transport is available. Sitting on Nineteenth Street, the Arapahoe Route is the one that's running close by there, only five doors away. Very convenient to go five doors and get on the bus. The proposed routes here, Sheridan and South, no, Bus Number Thirteen. Be seven blocks one direction and nine blocks the other direction. And even then, there is no guarantee that there would be a stop at that particular corner. If they're going to go and assign stops every four blocks, five blocks, whatever, there's no guarantee that it's going to be at that point. So it could be nine plus four or five, thirteen, fourteen blocks to get to the bus. You're talking a mile. And that is definitely going to be a drawback. So recognizing you can't serve every single part of the city, we still need to take a look at those individuals that choose to buy property and then feel like, where am I being left when the bus route disappears? I have had the privilege of living in Washington, D.C., using their transportation system. Yes, they do run longer hours. Yes, they do run Sundays and evenings and that, even on the weekends. But they do limit the number of runs they make on Sunday nights. It's hourly service, as opposed to during the day on weekdays, as I recall, it was fifteen or twenty-minute service. So again, a much larger community. But the point that was made by the by Mr. Camp concerning the Event Center, yes, in that community in Washington, they do have park and ride services where commuters could come in from the south part of the county to South Point and catch a bus downtown to state office buildings or to hospitals. And would have a system that could get people to their workplace and not require everybody to have a huge parking lot or parking garage. So these are things that perhaps we can consider in the future. That's all I've got to say. Any questions?
Questions? John?
I was wondering if it was me, Mr. Davis, don't we have a policy, would it continue, that if somebody's along a bus route, even though not at an official stop, that they could flag the bus and we would stop for the patron?
That is the current policy.
Yeah, I didn't see whether that would continue or is that abandoned under this?
We'll have a math answer to that when it comes up. Any other questions?
No, that's it.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak, please come forward.
Mike Morosen, fifteen hundred North Fifteenth. I ride the bus every day down to Senior Center to eat lunch, so frequent flyers, much cheaper, trying to find a handicap parking space and that. But on the back of these tickets, there's a number on the back of the ticket, and it corresponds to you. Every time you run it through there, you know, they know who's riding and where you're being picked up. So I think one of the suggestions would have been, when you're on this ongoing process, seeing that when you were sending out the letters, that, you know, some hearings would be going on, to send that person and say, well, your stop, you're getting on here, and your get-on is going to be over here and get off. What do you think about that? You know, easily, because like I say, the number's going to correspond when you go down to get this. They get your, look at your driver's license and your address and everything. So there is a way to kind of track those people. So asking that question would have been a very important question. How do you feel about, we're going to change this stop? Now, you know, it's only going to be a block more for me, but it's still another block, and the winter, and wintertime is kind of tough. And for some of the people that have more problems, would have been. Now, another suggestion, and it could happen today. You could have that Havelock bus go right straight down Havelock to the Event Center. It already goes to Havelock. Why can't it go a few more blocks? Today, that could be changed. Times adjusted just a little bit, and you would combine the Event Center, instead of having people park at SCC, having people park here and there and ride, well, there's a simple solution. Just extend the bus right down Havelock. I think the Event Center's at the end of Havelock and about Eighty-Fourth. So Havelock, basically, that's Seventieth, you know, sixty-six, Seventieth, and Twosland and that in there. So just a little further. And I think that would pick your ridership up. It would get the people, you know, to to work, because when I first came here, the buses ran almost till midnight. People working out at the VA could get out to the VA, especially the eleven into seven shift, and then the buses would be back on, because I come from Houston where the buses ran twenty-four, seven. They had to come in for one hour, get cleaned and out. So, you know, I've watched over the years, you know, the cutbacks, the cutbacks, and the cutbacks, and that has presented a problem with people that want to ride the bus. And then some of these proposed routes, yeah, I understand, we want to be more efficient, and we want to be that. But we've got to take a look at, you know, is this efficiency going to cost us in the long run? Some ridership. And that, you know, and I also use other riding, you know, to get to doctor's appointments, because some of the doctors are five, six, seven blocks away if I do ride the bus. And that's a long way to traipse through the snow and the ice to get there. You know, good weather's not much of a problem. I don't mind walking. But it does present problems with people in wheelchairs and that, so. And sometimes they can't get, Startran has a good service and some of the others, so. I just wanted to, you know, bounce a couple of things off that there's a simple solution for some of it. Thank you very much.
Yep. Questions for Mike?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak, please come forward.
My name is Marilyn Krueger. Twenty-three, twenty-four, A Street. I am a member of the Citizens for Improved Transit. But in the interest of transparency, I also am a Startran bus operator. I've been working for Startran for almost thirteen years. I'm not here today to represent Startran. I'm here to represent passengers who often don't have a voice. I have passengers that are transit-dependent. There was a young mother here at the Startran Advisory Board meeting who wept because she's going to lose service. She's going to have to walk now about six blocks with her baby. And she couldn't be here today because she has a job, and the time didn't work for her. And she couldn't be here today because she has a job and the time didn't work for her. I also had a gentleman who had planned to be here. He has a wheelchair, but he had some errands he had to run and he's transit dependent. So, he had to make a choice. Do I do the errands or do I go to this meeting? He needed to do the errands. I also have a gentleman named Jim who is going blind and he uses a scooter. He, on the new route system, he would have to walk about, not walk, use his scooter to go about eight blocks, assuming that that's an actual bus stop where he could go the nearest point. And he would have to cross two major streets. This is a real issue. What I would like to see is improve, more funding. I mean, I think the only way, what we are doing all the time when we try to improve Star Tran's system is we take from this and add to this. And, you know, robbing from Peter to pay Paul, it doesn't work. Back in nineteen seventy, my brother and his wife got married. They went for six years without a car and they were able to save enough money to buy a house and buy a car when they started their family. You can't do that today in Lincoln. Why was this service so much better in nineteen seventy than it is now? The city has grown, almost doubled in that amount of time. They could go, the service ran until about eleven o'clock at night. It ran on Sunday. I have passengers that can't go to church because there's no Sunday service. As far as these changes go, I have to say, this is the best transit development plan I have seen. This is a good plan. It just doesn't go far enough. You know, from a driver's perspective, it's an ideal plan. I don't have to go through neighborhoods. There'll be more straights instead of split, you know, having to work split shift because it runs later. It's a much better deal for me. But I have people who are so dependent and they're going to be devastated by these changes. And we need to really look at, at the whole picture. If we implemented the entire five-year plan at this point, I believe the cost would be about two-point-five million in addition to what we're spending now. But, then we would have a chance to have a service that would mirror what we had back in nineteen seventy and a service that really could be used as a model for other cities. These people made a great plan, but they were handcuffed by the budget restrictions. If you can just implement the whole five-year plan, I don't know where you're going to get the money, you know, but if that could happen, we would have a system that would be awesome. Thank you very much.
Carl?
Thanks, Trent. And Ms. Krueger, thanks for being here and for your service and for caring about the people you serve too. That's great. I just wanted to suggest to you, if you have contact with those individuals, have them write to us, email or letter, however they care to do it. You know, we'd like to hear from them. And if there's anyone else who's listening in this afternoon, who was not able to be here for this hearing, we also are interested in your opinions, your thoughts, how this impacts you. So, please let us know.
I will definitely let people know.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, other questions? All right, thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak, please come forward.
Good afternoon. My name is Charlie Schreder. That's S.C.H.R.O.E.D.E.R. Live at fifty-four twenty West Chancery Road. I am the president of ATU twelve ninety-three. I represent the drivers and maintenance folks at, down at Star Tran. So, I'm speaking kind of behalf of the drivers in a sense for a lot of aspects I want to say here. First off, the proposed plan, of course, it's not perfect. We all know that. But based on where we're, constraints we kind of have are city layout. Kind of makes it difficult for some areas to get a nice steady grid system going. And then money constraints where we're at right now. I feel that the system layout for the plan is about as good as we can do. But again, I think like many have said, we can do better with what we've got right now. Just with mere pennies for a lot of people, we could implement the proposal with Phase One and Phase Two on the system. And with the new, looking online at property taxes aspects, average household now, we showed a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars basically. And to increase, I know we all love more property taxes, but it would cost a person that hundred and fifty-five thousand dollar house nine dollars and nineteen cents a year, seventy-seven cents per month to fund the additional two parts I'm talking about. Because that's nine-hundred-and-fifty thousand. I mean, I may be way off my numbers, but what I see, we generate by just going up that little bit, about nine-hundred-and-seventy-one thousand dollars. Again, I said, "This is off the numbers I could get online, best I could find." A person, I just grabbed a few houses online just to find examples. For our lower income people that are living in a house like at Twenty-seventh and about Ferris Street, that household is worth thirty-five thousand, eight hundred dollars. That's two dollars and twelve cents per year, eighteen cents a month. Even for a person who lives down Twenty-seventh Pine Lake in a very nice house, odds are they're not riding the bus, but they have to deal with all the traffic on the street and buses take away some traffic. It would cost them twenty-three dollars and eighty-seven cents for a year. That's to implement going up through Phase Two, which would extend our hours to nine, ten o'clock on all of our routes basically. And it would help things out a whole lot. The person suggesting, I mean, I would love for us to get out to Lancaster Event Center. Our limitations though are we start extending routes beyond what we're looking at right now. I mean, when we actually get out there and start driving these routes, we discovered on the last change that like, for example, the O Street, we were going to do that in one hour. We found out very quickly that could not be done in one hour. So, we had extended to an hour and ten minutes. Same thing with the Fifty-four Vets Hospital and the Fifty-three South Point. Going to that hour and ten-minute trips, one thing makes it less frequent for people and it, the timing, it's fun trying to keep track of the schedule even when you're driving it. Like, let's say I'm downtown at two-twenty, three-thirty. And it makes it really difficult for transfers also. So, they, I think Nelson Nygaard did an awesome job at trying to do the best he can because I begged for them to take our bus, the Forty-two and the Forty-nine out to Eighty-fourth Street to cover that new area out there. And they said, "I don't think we've got the time to make it out there." I said, "Well, we'll see." Especially if we do go to the designated stop aspects. Most cities have that and it works tremendous compared to stopping every block. Because we currently have buses, certain times of day you get out there and you're stopping literally every single block and efficiency goes down the tubes. By stopping every second, third block, wherever it may be, it'll create much more efficiency. People out there, people come from other cities and they're trying to figure out where to get on the bus. We tell them every corner. They find it hard to believe because there's not a bus stop sign there. I says, "I know that. If you have a bus stop sign there, people know I can catch that bus there." Besides the things with all the look at areas that were basically being cut from. I know Mr. Whitman talked, he said to me before he goes out and says recommendations of cutting from this area.
One minute.
He says he physically goes out there and looks at what is it that is out there. Doesn't just look at the map. He doesn't just look at the statistics. He goes out there and looks at what is out there that is keeping this from having a high ridership or what is there potential out there? Because I said one area, like on the Arnold Heights, we should still go out in this area. He says, "In, based on his experience with other areas and other cities doing the exact same things, it's not there." Well, I got to trust his judgment because what I've seen and everything else he's done has been right on the button. So, I'm like, "Okay, I see where you're coming from." So, that's on that. Another thing with service, poll I've seen or something in the papers about a couple of years ago, they talk about young adults these days, they'd rather give up their car than their cellphone. They want to ride the bus. And with what's going on downtown, the development, so much more housing downtown than every place else, people are going to ride the bus and especially provide more frequent service and getting more straight line, getting out to places and on a timely manner. Thank you.
Questions? All right, thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak, please come forward.
Hi, I'm Lori Sims, two-five-two-five S. Been writing about forty years. I just have to echo some of the same things that some people have been saying. The seventies and eighties was much better bus service. I grew up then. I went to school and afterwards went to my friend's house and to the movies as a high schooler on the bus. I went places I can't go now. And now, when I need it, now when I have a cane and I'm dependent on it, it's not there for me. And these cuts are not going to help in places. And I rode the Forty-eighth NO bus after I was here for the Star Tran Board Meeting and the lady with the baby is one who gets on at that stop. I rode the bus one time, one direction, getting off at that stop. Now, I was told this is a stop that's not used that much. Okay, one time, one direction, got that many signatures, please keep our bus stopped. So, this to me is an indication that the bus riders have not been heard in this process, not nearly as much as they need to be. I think that this particular transit study, from what I've seen, has been an improvement over some of the past ones, but it's nowhere near where it needs to be. They looked a lot about where people are coming from, which is great. Not a lot about where people are going to. Or where, this question, I'm sorry, Mr. Camp, but this question just drives me nuts about, "Do you want frequency or do you want a route or do you want night hours?" We shouldn't have to choose. We shouldn't have to choose. We should be able to do all of that. I should be able to go out to the Events Center for all these events that I would love to go to and have a life. I would be, should be able to do all that and still get to my doctors and physical therapy appointments. And I don't even work currently, but if I had a job, I don't even know how I'm going to do that because there's so much limited hours. And it's great for Mike, I'm really glad he takes the bus. Some of the other people have talked about taking the bus to work. But try living, doing everything on the bus. It's almost impossible. You are not robbing Peter, you are killing Peter. You are killing us. You are making it so that low income and those of us with no car can't get anywhere. We can't function like a normal citizen. It's created a slave class. I'm not the only one who feels this way. Have any of you read this? Okay, this is another situation. Let's hire a study somewhere, somebody probably who doesn't know the neighborhood, doesn't know the state, doesn't know the town. We're going to pay them the money that we should be paying instead. For instance, in this case, if we took some of this money and paid it to Star Tran instead of paying it for transit studies all the time, maybe they could do something with it. Not that I'm saying that, you know, that they're, they were, like I said, bad. They've done better than most. But it says right in here, they're talking about, they want to redevelop for, to help poverty. And they said, "We don't know what that, how's that going to help it? You're poor, you don't matter, we get pushed, we'll push you out." That's the attitude that we feel like. And that's, it's prevalent with Lincoln. It's been prevalent for a while. So, when you say, "Get people involved," like you said, "Have them call you," I've been telling people, "Call, email, it's different, listen this time." And people say, "I just don't have time. I have to get to work." And it's not going to matter. My voice is not going to matter. Because they're really not going to listen. There's people who get on OUR homes on P Street who are not going to have a bus stop there now who have no clue that they're not going to have a bus stop. They don't, they don't even have maybe the total understanding to understand that. And that's a major spot that's served frequently. Granted, a lot of us that are writing, you know, we feel this way because we're already poor. We're already low income, we're disabled, we're this, we're that. I have people tell me, "Why don't you take the handy van?" Because they won't approve me. They say, "I'm fine to ride a regular bus. I can carry my groceries."
One minute.
I can't carry my groceries eight and ten blocks. And because you're not going to go to this grocery store, I have to go clear out South, pay extra money and still carry. And now my trip is not shorter, my trip is now two hours longer. It's just, I got on the bus to come here and there wasn't even a notice today on the bus that I wrote to come earlier today about this meeting. The notices haven't been there. They promised me they would be posted on the bus, so they haven't been there. Many people don't even know this is happening today. I just really think this needs to go much slower. I think you need to think much more about getting people involved. It's a complicated issue. It's not as simple as that darn question. And we can't give up any one of those things for one of the other things anymore. We've cut as much as we can cut. We need to be thinking about how do we find the funds and how do we make it better and how do we improve it? The city has grown. We have to think about the growth of it, not how are we going to cut it back more? That's just the wrong mentality to start with. And it, like they said, handicapped them and made them, their plan basically no good.
I'll give you a second to wrap up.
I have a ton. If you want to see this, I'll probably email it to Cindy, she can pass it on. And the other things I couldn't say while I was here. But, I just think it's really complicated when you're talking about the frequency and if you change this, it changes so many other things. It's not something that can be done this quickly. And I hear a lot about the future. This is a good plan for the future, to build on in the future. It might be, but are we waiting ten years again before there's another study to build on the future? Because what if this doesn't work? And we need to redo it next year or the year after. There's, I don't see the provision for that. I think there needs to be some kind of, I don't know, authority given to the director or something where this is looked at more frequently. And just like with this neighborhood, they said...
I'm going to have to ask you to wrap it up.
Okay, I'm sorry, my last sentence. They said, "If you want to do what's best for people, they need accessible, affordable groceries, accessible healthcare and good bus services." The bus services are interlinked with everything else that the city's doing and nobody acts like that's true. Everybody just pushes it to the side. Really need to think about that. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak, please come forward.
Hi, I'm Pat Schurz and one of my friends who lives off the Arapahoe, if they cut the one part, it's going to make it harder for her to get to and from work. She'll have to walk seven blocks if not more. And crossing Twenty-seventh Street is not going to be safe for her, even with her dog, especially if there's no light to cross. And I will be okay except I'll have to learn all the buses and figure out everything that needs to be done. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else wishing to speak this evening? Anyone else wishing to speak this evening before we have the Star Tran folks come back up? Okay, we'll move and have you guys come back up. All right, go ahead, go right ahead. Maybe address some of the questions that came up during the hearing.
Absolutely. One of the questions that has come up, there's two things that probably weren't emphasized as much as could have been. One of those is regarding bus stops and how do we plan to improve those stops and so forth. The, what we, we've basically started a pilot with adding designated, what we call designated bus stops on our UNL routes. That started last summer and kind of a test to see how that could potentially be implemented citywide. And so far what we've, and that really came about through surveys that we had issued in the past of people wanting to be on routes that didn't stop every block along the way. And what we found from that pilot project is we've seen a lot of success and people have been very happy with what we have implemented there. Bus stops are, there's lots of good things to say and Thomas can probably talk a lot about those different things. But what I want to emphasize is it's something that is implemented very, very carefully. We have to know exactly where people are getting on the bus and getting off the bus. There's a lot of work that goes into doing that. It's not simply we put a bus stop every three blocks or, and then let it go. We really look at how the street networks work, where good locations are for bus stops, where the ridership is coming from as we go through that process. And once we do that, we find that we can implement a very successful bus stop program. And I think we're already seeing the results of the success at UNL on those routes.
Yeah, the TDP or the Transit Development Plan does not make specific recommendations to say, "Here's where each specific bus stop should go." recommendations to say, here's where each specific bus stop should go. It lays out what the pros and cons are of, you know, what the, of a bus stop program. And certainly, if we look at one of the statistics we, you know, we've talked about earlier today, is that twenty percent of your ridership is new every year. As a business, how do you attract new people to come to your services? How do they know that there's services on that particular street? And that's one of the big reasons why bus stops or placing bus stops to help folks who have never used the service understand where that service is, is absolutely important. One of the other things, we looked at the market research when we went and asked what the, existing riders, what some of the things that they wanted, was better amenities at the actual stops. And one of the gentlemen I talked with earlier today talked about a stop, I believe it was Eighteenth and G, about the fantastic amenities there.
Oh, it's J Street.
Part, okay. J Street, pardon me.
Yeah.
But, you know, the, but one of the things that, when we have formalized bus stops, it becomes a lot easier to place those capital facilities and make improvements to those stops rather than looking at making improvements at every single corner along a corridor. So, that's one of the other things to consider with this. It's not, there's no hard and fast rule. It all depends on where people are going to, where, you know, and what those opportunities are, uh, from a bus stop placement perspective.
Another area is this, um, with this, we did say, okay, if we did have more funding availability, what would we do next? And that is why we have put together, uh, five potential phases for service. The first, uh, couple of phases we probably see is more vital than the other phases, and that's increasing the frequency of routes and moving towards, uh, evening, later evening service. And, uh, it's, it's, we feel it's, it's a critical part of the plan, but we want to, uh, know that that hasn't been ignored, that that, that is something that is important, and that's why it's in, in that phasing process.
Yeah, we, some of the other things we heard today of, you know, we should look at express-type services or park-and-ride type services, that is actually in the expansion plan. We also heard, uh, you know, service on Sundays, you know, why isn't there service on Sunday? Folks can't get to church. That is also in the expansion plan. So, we, we looked at, as a part of this, trying to lay out a, a, you know, a series of steps, you know, that we don't say, there's a big chunk that's, it's an unfunded, you know, need within the community, but tried to break it into steps that allow us to say, here, what, based on community feedback, here's what we see as the top five improvements that are necessary for the ser- for the system that requires additional funding, and lays out approximately how much that would be. And you, one of the operators did refer to the, or several people referred to the two point five million as being approximately the, the total cost of all those phases. That, it, uh, there's a lot more need within the community than is being served right now by the transit system, and those five phases take a huge step forward in meeting those needs.
Those phases are found in your plan on page eight dash four one. Uh, this plan is also, um, on our website, um, if you go to that website. Another aspect that is very important is how we implement this plan, and as part of that, I certainly see a promotional fair or even a fare-free system as part of that implementation to build strong ridership. And, uh, you're getting new people that now have the ability to use public transportation onboard, as well as, uh, existing riders are getting used to possibly new, uh, ways of, of getting around. And so, an effective tool is really to have a good marketing strategy as well as utilizing promotional fares in that, that period.
One of the other things that we heard, you know, of folks saying, it's like, why are service reductions in certain areas higher than in other areas? And I want to be clear that anytime we recommend a service reduction, or as a part of this process, we recommend a service reduction, that it's not something that we take lightly. We realize that there's, you know, we're negatively affecting folks as a part of any of those potential recommendations. One of the things I do want to be clear about is that we have an understanding of approximately how many folks are negatively impacted by this. So, that's, for instance, in the south, in the southern, you know, suburban, uh, southern service area, you know, the, in the areas where we looked at reducing service, or, you know, when we heard several folks say, you know, you, I have to walk longer or significantly longer to, to get there, the number of riders at the stops that we're talking, you know, that we're talking about, compared to the, some of the other areas, was simply not as high. It's not to say that there aren't people that are negatively effective. There certainly are, and there's, and we've heard from many of them today. Uh, but I want to make clear that, you know, it's something that we do take a look at when we're trying to weigh, is it better to positively affect, you know, this many people or negatively affect this many people? Trying to find that balance is extraordinarily difficult, and it's part of the iterative process that we use, uh, to try to come up with these, uh, recommendations. Uh, one of the other questions that was asked was, uh, do people walk further to more frequent service? And I think overall, this has been shown in national research again and again and again, that people do walk further to higher-quality service. Uh, you know, it's not to say, and I think, you know, several folks mentioned this as well, there are folks that do not have the ability to do that, and so I don't want to say that everybody can do that. But overall, if you put in high-quality service, and I think, you know, one of the examples that was given today was, I'm willing to walk further to go to the university services because it comes more frequently. It's a perfect example of folks, uh, walking to, you know, higher quality of service. And then along those lines, the preferred alternative looks at two different corridors, you know, one of them between Twenty-seventh and Vine Street in downtown, as well as from, uh, from G and Sixteenth and Seventeenth into downtown, the, you know, some of the highest-density areas of having service every fifteen minutes during peak times and at least every thirty minutes during off-peak times. So, again, we're looking at trying to create those corridors of higher frequency to begin allowing folks to walk to the service and allow them to use the service without necessarily needing to look at a schedule.
Okay, should we go with questions now? From the council? Questions? John? I knew somebody would have one.
One summary, one, then going back to the frequency versus the, of a route versus the headway. What have you found in your studies that people prefer most?
It's, uh, there is no ant- right answer to that. If I were to, it's one of the things we ask in virtually every community we work in, and it's considered a classic trade-off question, and, uh, like, you know, several folks in the audience, most people don't like to be, the answer that most people have is both. And, uh, so the question is, which one do you prefer? And, you know, typically, it varies from community to community, uh, in terms of, is it number one or one number two? It almost always is the first or second, you know, frequency and span of service, you know, how early or how late a service operates. It's always, almost always one or two in any community that I've worked in in the past twenty years. Uh, and it is very clear, you know, it is without a doubt, the, the market research, you know, done, you know, in asking that type of question, as when we asked it, when it was asked in two thousand thirteen, and when it was asked before then, span of service is, you know, how late the service is, in particular, has been a consistent top response.
And I think maybe one or two of the test fighters, Mr. Stewart, when I was asked the question, I was just trying to understand that if you did walk two or three blocks more, but you knew you're going to get more opportunity to take the bus and you wouldn't have to wait so long, how important is that to you versus a couple of blocks? And in your proposed routes, it looks like, you can see this shaded area where you had the old existing, or the existing routes, and you've tried to get more frequency there and, and better headways so that people aren't in convenience waiting as one or two people said, a couple hours to get somewhere. And so, it's just probably a personal thing, what you weigh there, but we all want to work on those. Thank you.
All right, other questions? All right, Cindy?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I'd like to move that we delay action on item twenty-five, that it be placed on a, uh, date certain, pending on February eighth, two thousand fifteen, for continued hearing in order, for the purpose of conducting those four meetings, uh, citywide that I spoke about previously. And then, uh, perhaps after we take the vote, if, uh, if we are in agreement, then I will give the public the dates and locations of those hearings.
Second. Okay, second by Roy. I think we're going to have one more question.
Just addressing this idea about what a, what a city like Lincoln ought to have in terms of transit. How do, did you look at peer cities and budget allocations, percentage of budget devoted to transit? Can you speak to some of those macro-level issues that might help us understand how we're doing as a city?
Yes. So, so part of this study definitely took into account our peers, and we have lots of good graphics that's really come out of that, uh, analysis. Uh, one of the, uh, one of the analysis of our peers was our span of service, which we started later and ended earlier than any of our peers, I believe. And, um, so that was a real quick thing that just kind of jumped to the very front is, we're missing, we're missing what everybody else is doing among our peers in that respect. As, um, as far as on-time performance, our on-time performance currently is about, on average, about sixty percent. Again, this was consistence, consistently lower than, uh, what our consultants are seeing in our peer, peer cities. And we fully, um, expect to get up to about eighty percent under this new plan. And again, it's, it's a complication of different things, of having, uh, some of the odd headways, frequency between buses that you've heard about earlier. We've, we've got a lot of interesting things going on that this is really going to streamline as part of that process. As far as, um, budget goes, uh, Thomas has some great graphs on, on ridership efficiency.
Yeah, I, I don't, off the top of my head, I don't recall how, you know, the, uh, Startrans, you know, rates, uh, from efficiency with its peers. But one of the things I do recall is that the level of investment, uh, from a local-dollar perspective is lower than most, uh, if, I think it's second to the lowest, second lowest of all the, you know, potential peer systems that we took a look at.
And, um, just the, one of the charts that I referred to in the, uh, report is on page three dash two. That's, uh, lists our peer cities, and that shows the span of service comparison. Our peer cities being Tallahassee, Waco, Little Rock, Lexington, Anchorage, Fargo, Springfield, Lansing, and Lafayette. So, those are our peer cities, and you can kind of, that's one of the graphs represented there.
You mentioned that the on-time performance would improve to eighty percent under the plan. How would span of service, we be not the bottom of the barrel, uh, if this plan is implemented as proposed?
We...
Still there?
Yes, we, uh, were, it's, it's a small baby step, I guess, not a giant leap on, on that area. The, we have two routes proposed to run until nine P M. We have eight other routes proposed to run until eight P M. And you can see on that chart on, on three dash two, uh, um, most systems, um, probably half the systems are running until, um, ten, eleven, eleven P M, uh, in the evening. And a couple of other cities run until nine P M., and then, a couple of cities run until about seven P M., um, eight P M., so, yeah.
They're still skimming the bottom?
So, we're still, yeah, we're, it's a baby step, but it's, uh, it could go farther.
Other questions? All right, we got a motion on the table to delay to February eighth with continued public hearing. Any further discussion on that?
If I may, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I have visited with a lot of citizens, and I've visited with, um, Mr. Davis and Mr. Whitman, and, um, I think that delaying this and allowing a hearing in each part of the city is so important now that we've come to one preferred route. Um, I think it's important to go into each area of the city and for the citizens that are there to, to really be able to address their particular portion of the city that's affected by the changes, what the changes are, and to have Mr. Davis, uh, and, and Mr. Whitman, if he's, uh, available, uh, to be able to address their concerns, their issues. I know that after the, uh, Advisory Board, they were able to make little tweaks here and there. Um, I think it's important that we look at the employers in the area as well as the citizens, and so, um, I'm, I am really appreciative of, uh, Startrans and of my colleagues, uh, for supporting, uh, a little more time. We've heard over and over again, maybe things are moving a little too fast, and I think people just need to have their voices heard. Thank you.
Other comments?
Just appreciate all the folks who came down tonight. It's very helpful to hear what you have to say.
Yeah, I think that was a common theme tonight, is slow down. Uh, there were a lot of common themes tonight, but that was the one, the one that stuck with me, so I, I'm glad that we kind of planned to do this, uh, delay, and, um, we can call the roll and, uh, move forward here.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylord Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
All right, thank you, gentlemen. All right, we will move on to the next item, please.
All right, next, our public hearing ordinance's second reading. Item twenty-six is comp plan conformance, one five zero three one, declaring four vacant parcels of land generally located at North Fourteenth and New Hampshire, twenty-one-hundred Y Street, and city-owned lots on the four hundred block of South Fortieth Street and the four hundred block of South Fifty-fifth Street as surplus property.
Members of the Council, David Landis, Urban Development Department, the applicant in this case. This went before the Planning Commission and was on their consent calendar and reported out unanimously. All of the city departments, as well as a number of other political subdivisions, were asked if there were any civic or municipal or school purposes or county purposes of this land. The answer was no. One of the reasons is, three of the lots are unbuildable and have significant easements and responsibilities on them, um, and the one that is perhaps buildable is in, is in industrial area. We do not have, uh, fish on the line. On the other hand, what we do know is that this is land that we do not need. And if it, if it's land we don't need, it's better that it be in the private sector if at all possible. It solves us tax base, maintenance, and liability issues if we can move it to the private sector. You'll see the four are listed in your preparatory materials. This is in the north bottoms. It is close to a railroad track, and that makes it unusable as far as the health department. It's also an area in a flood area and needs to be used for storage. It doesn't mean that somebody couldn't use it for parking cars or a garden or a dog run, but you couldn't build a house or an apartment building or a substantial investment. The same is true on Y Street, and in this case, twenty-first. This is an area, however, that, um, this is probably the one area that you might be able to put a buildable lot in there. The others, they are on L Street, and in this case, J on Fortieth Street, and here, a little bit further to the east, between Fifty-fourth and Fifty-fifth, again, J Street and L Street, a very small strip of land. These have, uh, significant easements on them as well. It doesn't mean that somebody wouldn't want the property. It's possible that they want a bigger backyard, a little further setback, a chance to run a dog, a, a place to have a garden. So, it may have private sector value. We'd like to get it on the website, and we'd like to sell it. We'd also like to go out and see if we have adjacent, adjacent neighbors who'd like to control the land. But we can't do that without knowing that it's surplus. That's what brings us here tonight.
Okay, questions? All right, no questions.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak to this item, please come forward? Okay, Theresa, next item, please.
All right, next, I'll call items twenty-seven and twenty-eight together. They are annexation one five zero one zero, amending the Lincoln Corporate Limits map by annexing approximately twenty-eight acres of property generally located at South Ninety-eighth and Andermatt Drive, and the related change of zone for a change from A G Agricultural and B two plant neighborhood business to R three residential at South Ninety-eighth and Andermatt Drive.
Good evening. My name is Tim Gergen. I'm with the Clark Anderson Partners, uh, here representing Kruger Development for this, uh, South Lake Development, what we're calling it. This is at the corner of Ninety-eighth and Highway Two. It is annexing approximately thirty acres, twenty-eight acres, and, uh, for ninety-one single-family, uh, homes. And I can, uh, this was approved as part of consent agenda at Planning Commission. And I can, this was approved as part of consent agenda at Planning Commission and happy to take any questions you may have.
Questions for Tim? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak this evening on this item? All right, we'll go to the next item.
All right, next, I'll call items 29 and 30. They are Annexation 15012, amending the Lincoln Corporate Limits map by annexing approximately five acres of property generally located at South 88th Street and Pioneer's Boulevard and the related change of zone 15032 for a change from AG Agricultural to R3 at South 88th and Pioneer's Boulevard.
Good evening again, my name's Tim Gergen with Clark Anderson Partners. This is on the north side of the Highmark Golf Course, right along Pioneer's Boulevard. As we know, golf courses aren't big moneymakers, as Lynn Johnson can testify on that. This is for annexation and zoning for 11 single-family homes. This is in accordance with the master plan that we've kind of worked out with the abutting neighborhood. This is going to take some reconfiguration of a few golf holes, but this will be able to develop more sewerable land in the Highmark region and happy to take any questions you may have.
All right.
Great, thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak to these items? Okay, next item, please.
All right, next is item 31, Text Amendment 15022, amending seven, section 27.62.100 of the Lincoln Municipal Code relating to the conditional uses in retail sales and services use group to correct an error made to subsection H2 in a previous text amendment to clarify that the floor area restriction for personal services applies to the size of the use and not to the size of the building the use is located in and repealing section 2762100 of the Lincoln Municipal Code as hitherto existing.
David Carey with the Planning Department. This is more or less a cleanup item identifying that when this change was made into the code, it was identifying the building instead of the use. By identifying the building, you really do limit the applicability of the limitation of 5,000 square feet. So, it needs to be the use to make this a more functional regulation. And this is really an outgrowth of interest in a particular commercial property that was looking to lease out one of the building suites. And then that limitation, if it was referring to the building, it would not be able to lease out the space because it would be too large. So, this really is to clean that up so that the, the use is what we're looking at and not the building.
Clear.
Thanks, David. So, are you saying this was actually an error the first time around or was it just something that wasn't thought through fully? And now you're revising what you had originally intended?
Revising what was originally, the original intent was always the use. It was not to be the building.
It was.
Yes, so it was an error in the, in the text itself.
Language, thank you.
Other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak to this item? Okay, next item, please.
Next is item 32, Change of Zone 15033, application of John and Janice Vermaas for a change from AG Agricultural to R3 Residential on property located at South 27th and Rockabye Road.
Good evening, my name is Mike Eckert with Civil Design Group representing Vermaas and Sons on this change of zone in front of you. It's a five-acre parcel located at 27th and Rockabye Road. This been annexed for some time and Gary's father, John, has moved and decided it's time for a townhouse development, which will be adjacent to the existing townhomes there along Rockabye Road. So, worked out some compromises with those neighbors because we had to back lots up to them because of the rectangular configuration of the lot. And so, we'd worked out some screening requirements with them and we worked out some screening requirements with the addition, with the five-acre parcel to the south of us. Those folks have every intention of staying as an acreage. So, that community unit plan was approved at the Planning Commission unanimously. So, I think we've got everyone happy and we're ready for a change zone from AG to R3.
All right, questions? All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak to this item? All right, next item, please.
All right, next is item 33, approving a lease agreement between the city Parks and Rec Department and the US Department of the Army for the lease of 333.75 acres of public park property at Holmes Lake Dam Site Number 17 for a 25-year term.
Good afternoon, Lynn Johnson with Lincoln Parks Recreation and I'm going to wait for the image to come up here.
You hit a rotten hair. Thank you.
Good afternoon again, my name's Lynn Johnson. I'm the Director of the Parks Recreation Department. The action between or before you this evening is the third renewal of a lease agreement with the Corps of Engineers for land that the Corps owns that is part of Holmes Golf Course, Holmes Park, and Rickman's Run. On the map here, this is Pioneer's Boulevard, this is 70th Street, this portion of the area is Holmes Golf Course, this area is Holmes Park, and this is Rickman's Run. This site was acquired and developed in the early 1960s. The lake was developed, I think, in about 1962. The history on this is that the Corps acquired and developed the lake, obviously, for flood control purpose. And then actually, they sold portions of the land back to the city, so actually for, for recreation use. And so, actually, this site is a combination of Corps of Engineers land and then city-owned land. The, this is the third lease agreement. There were two subsequent, or pardon me, two prior 25-year agreements. This is very similar to the prior agreements. It says that we're responsible for preparing and submitting an annual plan of operation and maintenance that's to be submitted in April of each year. There is, excuse me, there is no rent payment made by the city to the Corps of Engineers for use of the land. The land is subject to the potential of flooding. The Corps of Engineers is responsible for management of the dam and the pool elevation. And actually, there's a parallel easement that goes with this document that allows the Corps of Engineer to essentially flood the area. And so, much of the city-owned land here has a flood easement on top of it that allows for flood storage. There are minor things in this agreement. The city's responsible for maintenance of the grass, including mowing of the dam at least twice a year. I did want to bring one new addition to this agreement to your attention. And that's part of the reason for the delay in bringing this to you is we've spent several months working through the Corps of Engineers and understanding of this new provision. The new provision requires that the city as contractor will comply with federal minimum wage standards that are, were established under Executive Order 13658. And essentially, what that says is that anybody working within the Corps of Engineer-owned area is subject to those minimum wage requirements. It doesn't affect any of our full-time staff or any of our classified staff, but it does affect our seasonal staff. In 2015, the minimum wage is 10, was pardon me, $10.10 an hour. We anticipate it's going to be $10.15 an hour for 2016. Essentially, what will happen here, and through a lot of discussions with the Corps of Engineers, the city attorney's office, the city HR department, we've determined that we'll actually have a differential pay rate for both, for our seasonal employees working in Holmes Park and within the Holmes Golf Course. So, for example, when, when Southeast District Park seasonal employees are working in Holmes Park, they'll be paid at the federal minimum wage rate. So, next year, that'll be $10.15 an hour. And just as an FYI, the average rate, I think, of pay for those employees that is planned for 2016 is about $9.15 an hour. So, that'll be an additional cost of about $960 a year. So, not significant, but it is an, excuse me, an interesting change about how we manage. The other thing that will, that will happen is that the seasonal employees at Holmes Golf Course will be paid at a different rate than seasonal employees at the other four golf courses. That results in a cost of about, we're projecting that at about $2,400 a year. We did ask the Corps of Engineers if there was any provision for waivers and they said that, that this is a requirement that they have coming from the federal government that all of their contracts are, are subject to this provision. So, we really don't have an option here, to be perfectly honest. I did want to bring that to your attention. This is, as I said, a 25-year agreement. It would extend through 2040. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Carl.
Thank you. Lynn, you probably know what I'm going to ask about, this hole 15 at, at the golf course, which has been underwater on occasion. And this year, the rounds at Holmes Golf Course were the lowest among the city courses. I'm guessing for that very reason. Is there anything that could be done to, to reconfigure that hole or to, to the way the water comes in or, or something that could, could help us coexist with the, the lake and the, the easement for floodwater and have, have that golf hole be more usable?
That is a great question. And actually, rounds were affected last October and again in May, actually in part because the roadway was completely flooded for a number of days and people couldn't even get to the golf course. But yeah, there is a portion, hole number 15, when the lake backs up, it does obviously affect that hole. We are beginning to explore the possibility of some reconfiguration of that hole or at least reconfiguration of the fairway to see if there's some way that we can do that in a way that minimizes when we have high water conditions, the disruption of, of that hole, because I do think that it has an impact on play there. Working within this easement area, we essentially have to balance any cut and fill. So, if we were to raise an area, we've got to essentially take out a, a similar amount of soil in another area within the lake boundary. And we're starting to look at that and try to see if there is some way that, that we could improve the condition of that hole.
Great, thank you.
Other questions? Cindy.
Thank you, Lynn. Okay, I want to get back to this minimum wage thing just for a minute because it's 2015 and we're talking about 25 years. So, is, under the provisions of the agreement, do we need to increase as the federal minimum wage increases or what's the obligation of the city in that respect?
We, we do need to increase as the federal minimum wage increases. We'll have to monitor that amount every year and then we'll have to adjust our pay rate for the, the seasonal employees working in these two areas based on, on whatever that updated federal minimum wage is.
Thank you.
Other questions? All right, thanks, Lynn.
Thanks very much.
All right, anyone else wishing to speak to this item? Move on to the next item.
All right, next is our public hearing ordinance's third reading. Item 34, amending chapter 2.06 of the Lincoln Municipal Code relating to the mayor's authority to execute contracts by adding a new section numbered 2.06.120, requiring council approval of non-bid contracts above $50,000.
And before we do that, I'm going to have John speak to his, anything you'd like to add to this process? I know you, this is, you are the applicant.
Yes. Well, I'd just like to say that the last several weeks, we've had some delays and lots of discussions. And I've been listening to a lot of people, the mayor's office, my colleagues, several of the professional organizations like the engineers and the architects, and so have come together. And so, we've got a substitute resolution here. And I know my colleague, Ms. Raybold, has one similar. And I'm not sure how to proceed here.
Since we have, since we have public hearing still open, what I think we would do is we'll take testimony on this item. I believe we have somebody that wants to talk to us right here. So, we'll, we'll take testimony and then we'll, in public hearing, go into the voting session and those who want to make motions can make motions at that time. And, and we can talk about each of the different items that are up on the agenda for prospective motion and move forward from there. So, anybody that's testifying may be able to speak to either one of the items that they would like to.
With that, then, I guess I'd just like to make three key points. Number one, I've listened, you know, to the groups I just mentioned, even the Journal Star had a good editorial on this and said we need oversight and transparency. The second thing I've done is changed this where it is now applying to a codification of professional services contracts. Previously, it included what I kept calling widgets, but I think our purchasing department handles that well and we've got a process there. And so, I changed that. I do want to say to my colleague, Ms. Gaylor Baird, that she had given me some great suggestions before that was on the multi-city or multi-jurisdictional point. That applied more to the, again, the widget type thing, so that was not in the current form. So, it would just apply to personal services and it generally codifies an executive order of 2007 with a few minor variations. And then the third thing is that alters, it has good reporting requirements, I think, based upon what I've talked with people. Again, our city attorney and the mayor's office and I agree that a weekly type reporting would work. We don't need the annual, but it would be cumulative to give us an information stream in that regard. So, that's generally where we're going. Listen to the concerns of others. Sounds like maybe there's one or two concerns that still don't, haven't gotten resolved. We'll listen to hear what you have to say there. But it is just the professional services, codifies executive order and it has good reporting requirements. And also, one of the key things we heard early on and from several people was that, that my initial foray or my initial language was going to cause a delay of two to three weeks in the process. I have removed the city council. We don't have the cumulative oversight that I had initially proposed where we would be in control or oversee if there were continued contracts that got above a 50,000 level or or larger. That is out of this measure. There is a provision that a city council member at our, if we would like, could serve ex officio in a non-voting status on what's defined as a selection committee. And that selection committee only comes about if there's a over $250,000 contract. But it would just be there. And the purpose of that is to provide communication back to the council. And that's if we want. And maybe we don't even have one on that. And then, let's see, the third, trying to think what the other item was, but-
Change orders.
Oh, well, the change orders, we would come into play if there was a change order that exceeded the greater of $10,000 or 25 percent of the original executive order, the original contract. So, in other words, if you, you could, the staff, the city, the mayor could go ahead and do a change order of 10,000 regardless of what was above that. Say you had a $100,000 contract, it could be a change order of 25,000 without our involvement. And again, that was to key on some of the oversight and just to watch that. And so, we have that part of it. And then there, there is one other opportunity that I think is, is pretty much rare, if nonexistent, and that is if for some reason the mayor or the administration chose not to follow the qualification-based selection process, which is in the executive order, then we would come to the city council and together we would agree. And maybe an example might be that in the, the only example I can come up with is there's been some contracts with a local project manager that weren't within that system. We could have worked together on that, but I don't think that's even going to come to pass in the future. So, again, I think we've smoothed out a lot of those things so that it's, really boils down to more of following my four-letter acronym of PACT or Pact of Process Accountability, get a good communication between the administration and us, and transparency, so.
All right, Rick.
Rick Hoppe, Mayor, Valerius Chief of Staff. And I want to start off by giving the mayor's congratulations and thanks to the council for spending some time on this. As those of you who have spent any time with the mayor knows, he loves a good process discussion, which for those of us charged with execution can be kind of frustrating sometimes, but it is an important thing for our city to have those processes in place so we ensure the best outcomes. I also want to thank Councilman Kemp. We met for several hours late last week with the city attorney, spent a lot of time together, really enjoyed the conversation. We feel like we made a lot of progress on bringing the two sides together in terms of finding common ground. I would tell you unfortunately that we still think there are a couple of things that need to be addressed, particularly as it relates to the nature of executive authority and whether that change in executive authority actually is prohibited by the city charter. Let me share with you first, though, what I think the mayor's conception of how this ought to all operate is generally, okay? And the reason that he started down the path, the executive order, which I think kind of started the discussion. The idea was that really many of the things that are being discussed are highly technical in nature. And as a result of that, the people best placed to make an initial determination about the technical aspects of any of these proposals is the staff or the bureaucracy, because we hire folks that are engineers to know their stuff and they can help get through some of those pieces when those proposals are evaluated through the qualification selection-based process, all right? But there needs to be a check on those folks. We can't let them just decide in every single circumstance for a couple of reasons. One, I'd argue, is that if you just allow the bureaucracy to make the decision, you've taken elected officials completely out of the process. Now, that begs the question, who are the elected officials that are best placed to decide that process? I guess we would argue that it's the executive through the mayor simply because he can move the fastest. And time is money to the many contractors and private sector people involved in this and the council process. I won't call cumbersome. I think you all do the best you can to keep things moving forward. things moving forward, but even at its best, it's a two-to-four-week process. So we would believe after the bureaucracy has reviewed these qualification-based selections, that it is up to an elected official to decide it, and the most expedient way to do that is to have the mayor do it. But there's another reason to have the mayor involved in this. I'm going to hand out some language from the charter, because this afternoon, when I was going over what I was going to say to you all, I had sent an email to Councilman Camp earlier this weekend and said that the couple objections that we had to the way it's drafted currently revolved around this, this essence of executive power. When this proposal was still in the form of executive order, it was clear where the executive power resides. An executive order, by its nature, says that the mayor is in charge, because he can change that executive order and at the end of the day makes the decision. When it's translated into ordinance, however, that isn't clear, and we asked that it be clarified that at the end of the day, the mayor was deciding this contract. Furthermore, we're concerned about a city council member being placed on the selection committee for those formal RFQs that go up two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars and above, because then you are moving the legislative branch into a sphere that should be the executive, that should be executive-based. And I think the charter does lend credence to that argument. I, I handed out to you some language from Article Four, Section Twelve, that talks about the executive administrative power of the city being vested and exercised by the mayor. And if that were the only language, we'd still want to talk about it. But as you go through it more, there's a line that says the mayor should be fully responsible for the proper conduct of the executive administrative works and affairs of the city, which by its language seems to suggest that the executive is fully vested in the mayor and not in the city council. And even then, I'd still argue with you, that was the only text in there, the council would probably have an argument that we have a role. But then you get into the duties and powers of the mayor as listed in that Section Twelve, and I call your attention to subsection five, exercise supervision over the making of purchases and contracts, and personally, make or approve all purchases and contracts in excess of twenty-five thousand dollars. Now, I don't pretend to be a lawyer, but apparently I stayed a Holiday Inn last night, so I'm going to go ahead and try to give it my best shot. If I understand correctly on how we're supposed to interpret language in a constitutional charter, it's supposed to be plain language as the way it's written in terms of what carries the day in interpretation. And I think that plainly says, at the end of the day, the mayor approves all the contract. The ordinance, the way it's drafted right now, does not conform to that in several areas. I call your attention to page one, two-point-oh-six-point-two, one-two-oh, the subsections one and subsections three. Right off the bat, it says the city council shall review and approve all professional consulting service contracts. I don't believe you have the authority to do that under this language.
Mr. Hoppy.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's, it's in lines nine through twelve, nine through eleven on the first page, where it talks about the city council reviewing and approving all professional service contracts. It seems to me that the language in the charter is in conflict with that notion. Now, again, I have not had very much time to check this out, because I only happened upon it this afternoon when I was thinking about what I was going to say to you all. Then further down on that first page, lines fourteen through nineteen, is the section that Mr. Camp alluded to, the council might be involved in amendments to the contracts. Again, I don't think that lends to the mayor having the final say in terms of approving all those purchases. Finally, I'd call your attention to page nine and ten, where two-point-oh-six-point-one-eight-oh talks about the exemptions. The exemptions, by how they're written, suggest that the mayor follow a certain criteria in making his decisions. And I'm saying to you that when it says here that the mayor personally makes or approves all purchases and contracts, I'm not sure that this language can be added that restricts his ability to do so by placing criteria upon how he makes that approval. Now, again, I, I've only begun to get into this, but I think that language brings up enough question about what we're doing on this particular part of it, that we should probably spend some time figuring out if the charter prohibits the very conception that's being put forward here. Because the way this would operate in practice is the bureaucracy, if they followed the procedures as laid out in how you did the informal bids, would not have to go to council. But since the mayor isn't at the end of that rainbow to approve it, they ultimately would get the decision-making power, which I believe runs contrary to the charter. If, for some reason, we choose not to follow that procedure, then that contract would come to city council. And I'm saying in that circumstance, I don't believe the authority rests with the city council to go ahead and approve that. The part of this, though, I want to make clear, is that we're very much behind the reporting pieces of this and give great credit to Mr. Camp and other members of the council for identifying what I think was a definite weakness in this system. You heard me say the bureaucracy should decide that those pieces of technical merit, an elected official, probably the mayor, decides the end of it to make sure that, that they're involved. But I do think the council's role in making sure there's transparency by having a reporting requirement and following up it with questions about why we behaved in the way we did is an appropriate role to make sure there's some check on executive authority. So right now, I would tell you, the way it's drafted, we have trouble supporting it. We think that the issue on the charter needs to be discussed and potentially resolved. And we would like to continue to work with you on this, because we think there are concepts here that are very important to making a better process.
John.
Yeah. I, after these couple of months of going through this, I'm surprised at this, but my first question, when I asked Mr. Kirkpatrick to draft something for me, was I referred to this portion of the city charter, is this all right? And he said, yes. So I anticipated that six, eight weeks ago, so I'm surprised at the, at this late stage to have that raised. Now, that being said, the three areas that Mr. Hoppy has addressed, you didn't read the whole part on page one, for example, this is that, that are not, that basically, the mayor has total control as long as he follows a qualification-based selection. So it's only if it went out of this, and that's what has been proposed in the executive order anyway, that then we'd be, we'd come into play. So, you know, looking at everything, I don't know when that would occur.
I, okay.
But it, it provides a, a check and balance for the citizens of Lincoln, that if there is something we don't follow process, and I think it's well within, we're codifying the process, the mayor had said through executive order, and we're setting up a process, so that's not a violation there. The second point is, on the amendments to that, that was your language that I incorporated, and it's just to say that if you get above a certain magnitude, then that ought to come back and we discuss it. So I'm, that, that was your language, and I inserted there.
Well, amendments as opposed to change orders, the original language was not ours.
Okay. Okay. That is correct. But it, you know, it just, again, adds the process so you don't do a ten thousand agreement and then do another three hundred thousand dollar executive order, which some of that's been occurring. And then your third part was back on pages nine or ten, and you were, your first concern, and that was.
The exemptions portion, starting on line eight on page nine, Mr. Camp.
Okay. And I guess what was the concern about the exemptions?
Well, the concern is, I don't think you all have the authority, at least from what I'm reading in that section of the charter, to put those kind of prohibitions on how the mayor makes the decision. I think he gets to approve. It was different when it was in the executive order, because he was following his own instructions, i.e., it was an executive order that said this is how the bureaucracy is going to operate. In short, when we self-impose, it meets the, it meets the intent of the charter. When it's imposed on us by others, and by the way, this is much more restrictive than what was in the executive order, I'm not sure with what I'm reading in the charter that you have the authority to do that.
Well, and I've responded to that. That's one of the reasons I brought forth the legislation, because the mayor was saying, here's a process, but heck with the process, I'll do what I want to do. I have the right to do it under this exemption. And all I did was say, you can, we follow the process, but if there is a natural disaster, a terrorist attack, catastrophic event, or as you would suggest unforeseen circumstances like the striping truck going across the country, you know, that's an exemption. But to just say it's unilateral, I don't think our charter says he can unilaterally do anything he wants to do. Government operates by processes, and this provides that process and a check and balance. So I'm sorry, but I respectfully disagree with you. I wish you would have brought this up earlier. Again, I had talked with Mr. Kirkpatrick, and the first question out of my mouth was, how does what I'm proposing work versus the charter?
I, I think some of the confusion probably lies in the fact that there is a section of the charter on contracts, and, and it, it does go into some detail. However, this was a section that talked about the powers and duties of the city council versus the mayor in, in Article Four, Section Twelve, which I think does cast a different light on it. But again, I, I don't disagree that this needs more analysis than the ramblings of a, of a wannabe lawyer.
Let's, let's do this. Let's take a ten-minute break since we have some fairly significant new information presented to us, just so everybody can take a look at what John's proposal is, what the mayor's office has put in front of us, maybe give Jeff an opportunity to take a look at it as well, so we can figure out which direction we want to go in moving forward. So we'll start a ten-minute break and then come back.